Good afternoon, I was gonna say good morning, gosh, good afternoon and welcome to City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 21st. And we will start with a roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you Mayor Higgin, Counselor Campbell.
Present.
Counselor Carlson.
Present.
Counselor Croson.
Present.
Counselor Dodik.
Present.
Counselor Middleton Hope.
Present.
Counselor Palladino.
Present.
Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel.
Here.
City Mayor Parker.
Here.
And Mayor Higgin.
Present.
All present, thank you.
Thank you. And acknowledgement statement, the City of Lethbridge acknowledges that we're gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot people of the Canadian Plains and pays respect to the Blackfoot people past, present, and future while recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, beliefs, and relationships to the land. The City of Lethbridge is also home to the Métis Nation of Alberta Region III. And we'll start off with recognitions here, to my far left, Counselor Dodik.
Thank you. Yesterday, I attended a meeting of a group called SOCA and their, and Counselor Croson was there as well, providing a historical information about St. Pat's Church. And the group is, was formed to basically lobby and somehow convince the Catholic Church to reopen St. Patrick's Church, which is just across the street from City Hall. And the church has been shuttered for over 10 years. In fact, they recently did get dispensation to open it for a couple of days, they had a mass there. But the goal of this group is to reopen this very historical building that's been in Lethbridge for over 100 years to the parishioners. And I just want to do a shout out to them because I was impressed with their passion and the goals that they're seeking in terms of the church, both from the religious capacity, but also from the fact that the historical importance of St. Pat's. So huge shout out to SOCA, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a quick shout out to Lethbridge District Music and Speech Arts Festival is underway that starts this week. I've got a bit of, oh, you're looking at me.
Are you participating?
No, 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 I certainly, I certainly did participate many years ago when it was called the Kiwanis Music Festival. And I, every time I hear one of those little ding, the little bells from the adjudicator, I start to sweat because it, it was always, it's always, to me, it was a great part of growing up in schools and participating and there are, so there's a lot of people involved. And to go along with that, I just see such a, this city is such an arts type of city with a lot of the schools putting on musicals this, this spring. It's just been amazing, the participation. So a shout out to all the hard work that goes between teachers, organizers, adjudicators, and all those people that get involved. It warms my heart. Also, coming up on Thursday, my pleasure to be at the dinner honoring four outstanding alumni with the Lethbridge College. It'll be, it'll be a great night and I'm looking forward to being the emcee. Thank you.
Great. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Just a quick shout out to Lethbridge Sports Council and the 15 individuals and organizations that they named as their Achievement Awards winners of 2022. I believe this has been going on for more than a decade, at least 12 years in our community. It's always exciting to see the athletes get recognized. A big shout out, both because Dr. Gary Bowie's sports event, excellent name for Dr. Bowie, but also it was, I believe it was the Rotary Dragon Fest that was named, the Dragon Boat Fest that was named as that award recipient. So congratulations to all those folks in our community. Also, a bit of a personal shout out, a very dear friend of mine was named as the 15th Chancellor at the University of Lethbridge, Mr. Terry Whitehead. I've known Terry for many, 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 many decades. He doesn't want me to say that. But Terry was actually President of the Students' Union when I got my degree from the U of L. So it's nice to see that he's kept active. I know that he has sponsored many awards and scholarships at the university. And I think the university is very lucky to have him as their 15th Chancellor. So congratulations, Terry.
You have not aged yourself whatsoever. That was three, four years ago.
Yeah, 1967.
Thank you, Counselor Carlson. Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel.
Thank you very much. On March 15th, I had the pleasure of attending Economic Development Lethbridge's AGM. Congratulations to that organization for another great year. And thank you to Trevor Lewington and the EDL team for all of their hard work in our community. For every dollar of municipal funding EDL received in 2022, they returned $115 in direct economic impact, certainly some good return on that investment from the City of Lethbridge. And also congratulations to Adriana Mercanda, named as EDL's Board Chair for this next year. A few of us enjoyed some time at Mike Mountain Horse Elementary School last week, and it's looking at Lethbridge Public Forum, where grade three students researched, planned, and presented structures that they wanted to build in the city in order to improve the quality of life in Lethbridge. Some great ideas out there and certainly some budding business professionals and city planners that we have to look forward to. Thank you to members of the University of Lethbridge Students' Union for meeting with some of us on Friday. It was great to spend some time with you and to talk about what we can be doing together to work to make our city a better place for everyone. And I'd like to extend a welcome to the U of L students from PoliSci 3210, former Counselor Kaufman's local government class, who are in attendance in our gallery today. So welcome here.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Middleton Hope.
Thank you. So from an academic reference, it would be a bid to Counselor Schmidt-Rempel's comments because I was present at those three locations. And one addition was another coffee with council at the Blue Sky Lodge in which the mayor was grilled over several hours by members of the, of that particular lodge with very favorable results. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Middleton Hope. Counselor Croson.
Nothing to add to what's already been said, thank you Mayor Higgin.
Thank you, Counselor Croson. Counselor Palladino.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Parker.
Just, just to echo the comments of Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel in regards to the coffee with members of the Students' Association, it was a great discussion, it was lengthy, but it could wait, could wait another hour or so. So it was very well received and I really appreciate it. Also, this is my last day as Deputy Mayor, our last council meeting, and this is also Counselor Schmidt-Rempel's last council meeting as Acting Mayor. And I want to thank Counselor Schmidt-Rempel, Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel, for not only her work that she did as Acting Mayor, but her time before that, I know if I said that already, but it's a kind of a, a year that you do this stuff and it's stuff that we all love to do, so I thank you for that. And then I do believe that Counselor John Milton Hope will become Deputy Mayor as of April 1st, and I will be the Acting Mayor. So looking forward to that as well, but thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And gosh, so many things going on in our community, I know I wanted to add a couple more. Congratulations obviously to Adriana Mercand, which was the new Board Chair, as was mentioned by Acting Mayor for EDL. Also had the opportunity of attending a couple of different events last week, the LCI Provincial Wrestling, or Provincial Wrestling that was held at, at LCI and with over 300 participants. What an event to show up there and see how many from all across the province there. And they've been able to showcase many different sports at LCI and it was a great success from everything that I've heard. Also, the Moonlight Run, anyone who had the opportunity to be part of the Moonlight Run, it was the 36th Annual, I believe it was. And I say that as I'm doing math in my head, I remember as I first moved to Lethbridge, the first year I moved to Lethbridge, I was asked by Mr. Reimer, who used to be the manager of the Lethbridge Lodge, and he was talking about this race and asked if I'd do some volunteer work and help out with him. And that was the very first Moonlight Run, that used to leave from underneath the canopy of the Lethbridge Lodge and to see it's come this far in this many years and it is bigger and better. And there was 2,023, imagine that, participants. And so it was well-attended. And last but not least, I do want to put a huge shout out to, to Ron Sakamoto. I know we've mentioned that he was going to be receiving this award, he did receive the award here, Special Achievement Award at the Junos. And so what it is, it's a, it is called the Walt Grellis Award, and it's named after the co-founder of the Juno Awards, which recognizes people whose work has significantly impacted the growth and development of the Canadian music industry. And in speaking to Ron after much of the media, again, he reiterates the importance of being able to live anywhere and to be able to, to have that impact. And he's chosen Lethbridge for, for this many years when he should, could be in Nashville or some other, some other place that is maybe possibly more prominent when it comes to the music industry, but he does choose Lethbridge. And so we're grateful for, for him and for his ambassadorship that he does for the community of Lethbridge. And with that, we will move on to the adoption of the agenda. Have a resolution from Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel, be it resolved that the agenda of the regular meeting of City Council on March 21st, 2023 be adopted as presented. City Clerk, are there any amendments?
Mayor Higgin, no, there are no amendments to this agenda today, thank you.
No amendments, Acting Mayor.
Seeing none, I will call for the vote.
Question's been called, all in favor, opposed, carries. Have a resolution here on the consent agenda from Deputy Mayor Parker, be it resolved that the minutes of the following meeting of City Council be approved and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the same City Council meeting from March 21st, 2023. And further be resolved that City Council receive for information the following reports, the status of directed resolutions on March 21st, 2023, procurement summary report February 2023, and further be resolved that City Council approve the recommendations contained within the following Standing Policy Committee reports. 4.4.1 Parks and Cemeteries 2022 Annual Budget, be it resolved that Council receive the information of the Parks and Cemeteries 2022 Annual Report. 442 Planning and Design 2022 Annual Report, be it resolved that Council receive the information of the Planning and Design 2022 Annual Report. 4.4.3 Drone Regulation Review, be it resolved that Council receive the report as information. 4.4.4 Taxi Rates and Regulation Review Update, be it resolved that City Council amend the License Bylaw number 5658 as follows. Number one, that the regulated fares and charges for operation of taxi operators as well as a device associated with the fares and charges be removed. And number two, that the requirement for a taxi to be equipped with a top light be removed. And further, direct administration prepare and amending bylaw to capture said changes by Q3 2023. I do see a couple of questions in here, if I can entertain them first, Deputy Mayor? All right, Counselor Croson.
Thank you Mayor Higgin. Through you to the City Manager or Designant, the Just Culture Champions Course under the procurement summary, if we could get some more information on that, what is the expected outcome timeline, what can staff expect from that? Very curious about that procurement.
I'm happy to get back to you, Counselor. I don't see staff in the room right now and I don't believe Mr. Castro has, has that level of detail. So I'll, I'll reach out to staff and hopefully provide an update later in the meeting.
Perfect, thank you. And then the Gartner Advisory Service, what is the advisory service that, that procurement is purchasing us?
Through the Chair to Counselor Croson, thank you for the question. That's a subscription service that the IT department renews annually to get consulting services and survey services, things like that through the Gartner Company.
Thank you. Those are my only questions. Thank you Mayor Higgin.
Counselor Croson, are you okay with, with us moving this forward with the consent and getting that information later, is that all right?
Yes, that's fine, I'm just curious about that information.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a question on 4.4.4. I was able to attend the, the first meeting at committee where the taxi rates and regulations were discussed. I had to leave the meeting before this resolution came forward. I'm just curious, was there any feedback from anyone at the meetings on, on this? Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, we did have one representative from 94 Cabs that was there and he had no issue at all, but at the same time, he reiterated that he does not represent industry, he is just representing himself.
And thank you for that. The second question was, I didn't quite understand, amend the bylaws that any device associated with the fares and charges be removed. I couldn't quite figure that out, does that mean, it, it almost seemed to me like it was actually removing the taxi fare.
Well, there wasn't a need or, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Chairman, because you are the Chair of the Committee. There was no, in the law, they will no longer need that, but we were also told through our administration that there's numerous apps and things that can be used now in regards to logging kilometers and all that, but they wouldn't have to have a set meter anymore. And correct me if I'm wrong, anyone who was on that committee with me.
Yeah, no, that's correct, because we specifically asked about that. And there are app, app options and the, the representative from the taxi cab company did indicate that yes, there are app options that they can access to do that measurement for them.
Okay. But, and final question is, this is just to direct administration to make the changes to the bylaw and bring it back for review. So if there are concerns in the rest of the industry or the community, there will be that opportunity?
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm going to direct this, it will, a bylaw will be come back, but would there be public consultation or would there be a public hearing for such a bylaw?
There would be no legislated requirement for a public hearing, but as, council could decide that they wanted to have that, or they could direct other kinds of public engagement.
I just didn't want to make-
Madam Clerk has some other words to add.
I just want to make sure because I didn't want to send out a mixed message that there will be some kind of public hearing in regards to that. But at the same time, the community is always, has the opportunity to engage us. And I think the, the main players that probably want to be engaging us would be industry and they know and they've been part of the process, so, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mayor, I'm just wondering if you want it to come back through governance and then the public would be able to engage, or do you want it to come back straight to council, it's not clear.
Now, coming, and I left right towards the end of the SPC, so I'd, same as yourself, Counselor Carlson sat in the first and then the second, I just caught a majority of it. But is there an appetite for, does the committee want this to be cleared and passed at council or is it for that community engagement?
It can, it can come back for another round of community engagement. We have had this on the agenda twice now for that committee. And we've, we've offered that opportunity. It's my understanding through the City Clerk's office that all of the cab companies were invited to attend both meetings and we had one representative out from one, one cab company at that time. And since we have seen it twice on the agenda, I feel like the community has had the opportunity. But if we want to make those bylaw changes and then bring that back to that committee again to give the, to give everybody an opportunity to see what that final change bylaw looks like, cab companies and community included, I don't see that that would be an issue.
Right.
Because it does allow, and I am about community consultation, it does allow for that one more step for everybody to see what those final changes will look like once they're done.
I think, and that's a good idea, the importance of, of having all of that information that's brought from administration back to the committee.
And it's presented in the one, the one changed bylaw, we could, we could certainly do that again.
I know a question I, I had had, it was that, gosh, they can charge whatever they wanted, but we know that regulation, there's going to be companies that would go, I'll take advantage of that, I'm going to charge less. So it does remove that, so I think it's, it's, and it's tough to govern some of these groups, this is a business and it's tough for, you know, business to go forward and tell someone, you know, what they're going to charge for. It's, this is democracy, if they want to charge what, what they do, they're just, they may get less business or more business depending on their rates, so, but that to come back is, is a great idea. Counselor Carlson, are you finished there or?
One last question. In the first meeting we had on this, there was an indication from our staff or from administration that one Alberta community had gone down this path in past and then had, had to sort of reverse course. Was, was that discussed or brought up at all about the reasoning behind that? Or maybe I'm misremembering?
I do recall that that was brought up, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it would be more of a closed-door discussion, I think, I think when we were told that, my, not, not that we were briefed, but if we wanted to find out more, I think it would have to be, because it'd be information that they'd want to keep, to protect the, of that community.
But that was never discussed?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I do have another question from Counselor Middleton Hope, but prior, I think we should remove this from the consent agenda anyways to, to start and have a resolution that's going to go with it to direct it back to, at a future meeting to an SPC, is that fine to have that pulled? I guess anyone can do that, we don't need to vote on that?
Oh, it-
Oh, but you're good, go ahead, Counselor Middleton Hope.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not in favor of sending it back to, to Community SPC. I, I, as Counselor Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel has indicated, we've had the taxi industry there twice to this committee. I see, quite honestly, I see no further need to have additional consultation with them. They've provided lots of input, the, the, the changes have been, have been addressed. So I think this should probably go back to council rather than coming back to community safety.
And Acting Mayor.
I'd like to pull this from the consent agenda so that we can discuss it.
Yeah. So we will pull that from, so that's always, we're going to pull that from the consent agenda, we can do further discussion after, on that. So consent agenda with removal, we're taking 4.4.4 out, so I'll send it over to Deputy Mayor Parker, aside that, are there any questions?
Well, thank you. As stated, these are reports of our SBC. I want to thank the members of the SBC, but I also want to thank our staff administrative team to help in supporting these committees and getting us the information we need to make good informed decisions, so thank you to them. As well, this is all on the City of Lethbridge website, so if people want to get a detailed report on each one of these, they'd be more than happy to link through the City of Lethbridge website. Otherwise, I would call the question.
Question has been called, all in favor, opposed, so carries. I have a resolution here, now actually, Deputy Mayor, it's my resolution, I guess you-
We're not happy to read it. I have the following resolution, official business motion signed by Mayor Higgin. Green Shirt Day, item 6.1. Whereas on April 6th, 2018, Canadians were heartbroken to hear the news of the Humboldt Broncos bus crash of the 29 passengers, 16 lost their lives, and 13 will bear physical and emotional scars for life. And whereas on April 7th, 2018, the Humboldt Broncos defenseman Logan Belay succumbed to his injuries, his parents, Berdine and Toby Belay, offered to donate his organs. As Logan told his parents, he was registered as an organ donor as he was inspired by his coach and mentor Rick Sugget, who saved six lives as an organ donor in 2017. And whereas six lives were saved by Logan donating his organs, the news spread of the organ donation by this young hockey player and it's estimated that more than 150,000 people registered to become organ donors in the days and weeks that followed. To date, this has been the largest number of Canadians registering to become organ donors in Canadian history due to one event and one person. And whereas Green Shirt Day was created to honor, remember, and recognize all the victims and families of that fatal crash and to continue Logan's legacy by inspiring Canadians to talk to their families and register as organ donors. And whereas on January 11th, 1999, City Council passed a resolution saying that the mayor's office would discontinue the longstanding practice of issuing proclamations to avoid endorsements for a cause of or program that would result in controversy in the community. And whereas the current City Council requests an exemption to this resolution passed at the time of this extraordinary cause, therefore, be resolved, council provide an exception to the January 11th, 1999 resolution and request the mayor's office to declare April 7th, 2023 as Green Shirt Day as a tribute to the City of Lethbridge resident Logan Belay. Mayor Higgin?
For questions, if there's any questions from colleagues, Counselor Middleton Hope? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, just one. I, I guess it, it's, it's a question to each one of the council members as well, are we okay with the exception to the policy? And are we, are we also okay with the potential for opening up the door to more requests? I think we have to consider that in spite of the important nature of this particular request. Candidly, I'm fine with both. I'm fine with this exception and I'm fine with exceptions in the future. But I think that's something that we need to, as a, as a council, we need to consider when we vote on this motion. That's all I have to say.
And I can answer that with, we, we discussed this quite in, in, quite in length when it first came forward here a few years back, and that was a question, it's a very similar question. And it's almost a, one-off questions that come forward in requests because I know since that we have had a couple other, other days. One is, I think, the Missing and Merton Indigenous Women's Walk, I believe that is one of them. And so we do have others that have come forward. It hasn't been in the five years, a lot of requests coming forward, but I understand your question and it is something that was, was stopped in 1999, but we haven't seen any, correct me if I'm wrong, my colleagues that have been here, you know, previous council, if that's anything. Yeah, yeah, since 1999, council. So yeah, that's, hopefully that answers your question. All right. Counselor Campbell.
I mean, I, this probably, I'll just pose it, I mean, I, I guess both you and both I are pretty passionate about this, this day, and I'm just wondering, what are the chances of this being something that's put in perpetuity?
I'm, I'm glad you asked that. This was, this is brought forward here previously, if you recall, and I think that the reason that I decided when I brought it forward to, to have it each year or to bring it forward each year, I decided to do that, is that it would bring back, you know, bring this to light again. Sometimes we'll put things in perpetuity that is, you may forget them the following year. So to have us discuss it at the council meeting each year was something that, again, refreshed people's memories and minds on what, what had happened those, those years ago and all of those lives that were saved. And so, and the lives that were saved, but then also the, the organ donation, so it brings it to light again. And, and I've been told that it does have an influx each time this, this time of the year comes along, that, that those donations and signed, you know, your driver's license goes up. So I think just the reminder each year is why, why I thought it'd be better to bring it each year.
That makes sense, thanks.
Any other questions? I've seen no questions, would you want to open debate?
Opening, close, I guess, unless there's some that wants to add in, but no, this is a great, an opportunity again, as I've already mentioned, Counselor, to Counselor Campbell, about bringing this forward each year and, and being able to, to, again, show our appreciation for this incredible young man and the work that he has done. So with that, most of it is in the resolution. And I did want to reach out though and, and challenge, if I could, city staff. We've got, on April 7th this year is Good Friday, so of course, it's Green Shirt Day is, is, will be closed here at City Hall. And so I'm encouraging this city staff, if they could, to wear green on the Thursday, the April, April 6th, the day before. So that would be great to be able to see that. And with that, I've got nothing further, I would just ask for council support.
Obviously, as you're opening your closing, I'd call the question, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I do have, now, do we want to, okay, we'll do this in here right now, okay. 6.2, official business from Counselor Croson and Counselor Carlson regarding election signs within road right-of-way. I can open up for questions. I'll read the resolution first then and then open up for questions. Official business motion, election signs within road right-of-way. Whereas the City of Leopards allows the installation of electric signs, election signs, can be electric, I guess as well, within the public road right-of-way is outlined in an administrative guideline. And whereas the election sign guidelines are designed to maintain safety for citizens using the right-of-way, protect and maintain the life of public infrastructure within the right-of-way, and ensure the right-of-way remains neat and orderly in appearance. And whereas the number of signs creates visual clutter and unsafe distractions along the public road right-of-way. And whereas hundreds of election signs were legally placed in the right-of-way in the last municipal election and confiscated, requiring additional full-time employees during the election period just to manage the collection and distribution of the signs. And whereas the council and city received complaints from the community about the signage. And whereas the majority of the temporary election signs are made from single-use corrugated plastic which are not accepted for recycling in the Leopards Waste and Recycling Centre, thereby generating additional volumes of waste in the landfill. And whereas land use bylaw permits the temporary use of signs on private property, therefore be resolved that the city council, direct the city manager to amend the administrative election sign guidelines to prohibit the installation of election signs within the public road right-of-way effective immediately. And I will turn it over to, I'm not sure, Counselor Croson, Counselor Carlson, to start, or one to start, one to close, if there's any questions?
Thank you. I'll check with Counselor Croson. I thought we'd entertain questions first unless a preamble perhaps. I'm not sure what Counselor Croson was wanting to do. Proceed.
Questions are fine. I'm sure that will give us a hint of where people are heading.
Excellent.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know Ms. Hilford has informed me that we do have some staff here that deal with election signs and may be able to answer any questions. Am I correct, Ms. Hilford? Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have staff here to answer questions. I do have questions. Counselor Middleton Hope? In for debate? Okay, Counselor Campbell?
I guess just kind of a question on federal, provincial versus civic politics, and if someone is one worse than the other, in terms of clutter, I guess. I know, because you have 30 candidates in the civic election compared to the fewer number in federal and provincial, does that make a difference in what's being brought before? Is anybody can answer that? If there is.
We do have, sir, Mr. Rahovi is here. He's a traffic technician in transportation. He's the one that I think gets to collect the signs, correct me if I'm wrong? I don't know if there's, if you wanted to attempt answering that question? Oh, just come to the mic there, yeah.
For the municipal election? Yeah. So with the number of candidates for the municipal election, I think there are more than the federal or provincial where there's only a handful of candidates for each party.
Campbell?
I don't know, is it more of a problem for the civic election for people getting full-time jobs, going out and removing signs? I mean, I guess, it's not a big, major controversy, but that's what you would say?
Yeah, it is, in addition to my workload, just to go out, get the signs that they're illegally placed, and then have to deal with getting in contact with the candidates after to meet them, to give them back.
Thank you. Just curious. Thanks.
Thank you. And I just, in the resolution here, a question to, I guess, probably Mr., I think Director of Infrastructure, Mr. Sanchez, through city manager. It says they're not accepted for recycling in the Leopards Waste and Recycling Centre. Is my understanding, because I know many signs went there, is that, I thought they were taking signs for recycling?
And that's an excellent question. Signs, if they meet the requirement of the recyclable materials, they can be recycled. And there is examples where, in previous elections, I believe, at least two candidates, they brought the signs to the Waste and Recycling Centre, and they, before that, they called and they inquired what type of science can be done, and they went and did that type of materials that they used. And they also worked with the staff in order to accommodate the load, because they cannot drop those at the MRF. So we created a special area, the PDO, public drop-off, where they could drop the signs, and then we send those through the recycling channel.
Thank you. Counselor Middleton Hope?
Yeah, I'm in for debate.
I knew that. I thought you popped in again when I put you out. Okay. Counselor Carlson, debate or question?
Questions, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just to follow off if I can to Mr. Sanchez, if I may. Am I correct in understanding that we had two out of all the candidates in the previous election that had proper signs and were able to be recycled?
I will say, to my knowledge, two candidates reached out to the Waste and Recycling Centre, and they went through that process. That doesn't mean that the other ones didn't do it one way or the other, because that could be, they just went there and they used the beans that are at the side, or they could have gone to the recycling stations through the city. But again, the caveat is, sometimes depending on the material that they use, that material might not be recyclable. So something that we, I know we talked during the last campaign, is that we're going to have some sort of information that we can actually put forward and say, this is what we encourage to be used as material that can be recycled after the fact.
Okay, thank you. And so is it correct, though, that that single-use corrugated plastic style is not recyclable? Or is that in error?
Technology change, day after day. Right now, that's a really difficult recyclable material, and it's hard to market. So when we work with the companies that we have to recycle those, in some cases, we might need to pay a high amount in order to get that recyclable. And that's where it comes a little bit of an issue, and not everybody takes that. So it's.
It does cost us more to get rid of those that aren't excellent. Thank you for that. Next question, Mr. Mayor, through you to maybe Ms. Hilford or any administration, if they've got this information. I know that there are many communities across Canada that have gone this route. Most notably, I believe, throughout Ontario have banned these types of election signs in the public right-of-way. Are there any in that we, that you are aware of or you discovered in Alberta? I know municipalities are moving towards this, but I couldn't find any that had actually done this yet. I know that it's up for consideration for many municipalities right now because of the environmental waste, for one, the visual pollution, for another. It's quite insane.
Question. I haven't done the research. I'm just wondering if Mr. Sarsfield has done the research, or Mr. Rahovi would know, but I don't know.
So we did check with a number of municipalities, and we didn't find one that had done it, as you mentioned before. Several are going along that path, but we're first, so that's good. We're not.
Thank you. And I just, just to add to your first question, Counselor Carlson, as, not that I plug for my business, but in the business of this, a private business that does signage, and we pretty much cannot buy product now that is not recyclable. But what I understand from Mr. Sanchez is it may be hard to get to a market, but things have changed the last four or five years dramatically where the product we purchase has to be recyclable. Counselor Palladino?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I must have been one of the two that brought my signs in to be disposed of at the Waste and Recycling Centre. But my question is, the motion mentions that the signs are illegally placed in the right-of-way, and this is public property. And if they're illegal, are we removing, we are removing some of them, but can we get challenged by removing? That's my question.
I know that we do remove many of the signs when we get calls. It's, I know it's impossible, well, it's not impossible. It's challenging to police it, because as Mr. Rahovi said, there's one person, he's got actually a full-time job, to do this. So when there's, I know that the last election, just within five blocks of my house, there were hundreds illegally in the intersections. Those got removed over time. They'd get removed, and this is my understanding of the process. A phone call is made to the city. The city, when they have time, goes out, removes them, then has to store them, then contact the candidate, have the candidate come and retrieve them. And quite often, they go right back where they were, and the process starts again. It's a huge waste of time and money, in my understanding.
So my question was, is that activity that you just described, is that illegal? Can the city be challenged for taking private property, the signage, from public property, the right-of-way? Can we, are we stepping over our bounds?
I can probably start that answer, and the solicitor may add anything on top of that. We are following in this case a right-of-way policy and guidelines that we have in place that we use for design and even the whole, when we do development. So by following this policy, there is no particular, there is a portable signs bylaw, but does not regulate these election signs. And I actually just confirmed that a few minutes ago. We go and when we get a complaint, Phil will go there, and as I said before, is on his time. He already has a job, but that election time is a very busy time for him, because he will be back and forth collecting the signs like it was explained before, and then we take them, we wait to be contacted, or contacted the person in this case. And if they don't come back, then we dispose of those at our cost. So again, there is a lot of time and effort to monitor and enforce this, there is no doubt. And we have one person that does most of the work. Now, when it comes to a bylaw, again, we don't have a particular bylaw for election signs, and I don't know if the solicitor wants to add anything in terms of compliance or.
Thank you. Sir, did you have anything for that?
I was just going to respond directly to Counselor Palladino's question. As with any action a government takes, we can be challenged, and anything that we do that would impact the right of free expression and in particular political speech, which is at the core of that value, would be something that we'd want to be careful about how we do and take care to do that. But have we been challenged? Not to my knowledge, and do I know, I can't add beyond that.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Schmidt-Reppel?
Thank you very much. I guess if we took a look at removing this, and Mr. Mayor is through you to the city manager or designate, would the city be prepared to offer other services to provide information about candidates? We started making a move towards that, but these are a very public, visible way, and we're removing that for candidates. What would we do, if we're removing it, what would we do to replace it?
Can you repeat the question?
So if council were to remove signs from a campaign strategy, which is an easy entry point for anybody new to entering the campaign, would the city be prepared to offer other services to provide information to candidates and advertise for them? We started that with the videos that we did this year, but this is a very public, visible way for people to get their name out. And what would we be doing to replace that?
Yeah, it's a deep question, I would say, you know, as far as exploring options of what we might be able to do to replace that, the costs associated and so forth. I think that's something we'd have to probably do a little bit of work on. I'm looking at Madam Clerk, if she has any other thoughts on that aspect as well.
When people do submit their papers, I mean, we do put their name out there on the web, and we do do the videos, which is new and such. But we'd have to be careful that we're not promoting anybody. It would have to make sure that we're treating everybody equal. So I know that there is forums out there that other organizations put on, but again, like the city manager said, that's a deep question. We'd have to explore. It's not something that I could probably answer today. But we'd be open to it if council gave some direction on that.
Thank you very much. This question to Mr. Sanchez. What do we do with our current coroplast signs? If recycling is a concern, and I do know that there is a company up in Calgary that takes these, City of Edmonton had its program. You know, there are places that we could partner with, but we've got a fairly substantial coroplast sign sitting right outside council chambers advertising green bins. What are we going to do with that as far as recycling goes? And would we, I would think, one of the things rolling out of this would be, the city needs to stop printing on coroplast signs altogether if it's an issue.
Excellent question. I will need to get back to the team. I know the ones, as mentioned before, that we use are signs that we can recycle. Depending on the structure of the materials, everything that we buy, we buy with that intent. In regards, other signs that are not bought by the city that are still available through the community, as I mentioned before, they could be recycled, or they are recycled, but the cost is one of the limitations that we have. We have currently, I will say, at least three or four providers that we work in Canada and in the US in order to recycle those. And there is always a way. There might be a delay, because we need to have certain quantity in order to do the shipment for those, and it's the storage, the capacity. But all the signs that we own and we use are being recycled through the community or the facilities that we have.
So that is something that we do take into consideration, and I do know that print shops also take into consideration those sorts of things. There's a lot of changes coming down in plastics from the federal government and regulations around that. Another question I have, and this through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager. Does anybody have any idea how this is going to be affected by the extended producer responsibility legislation that's coming down from the province? This might be a moot point when we come down to the end of this year, because that extended producer responsibility legislation will be in place. And there may be fees associated with recycling this type of product anyway, which would make this discussion completely moot, because we may not even be able to print on this, on the coroplast. So that recycling may not be part of the conversation at that point. Do we have any idea where that's at?
And good question. The EPR policy and the implementation that has been approved by the provincial government late last year is a work in progress where they haven't defined yet all the details and the requirements on how it's going to be implemented and how will be included. At this point, they have a date when they want to have this in place by 2025, so that will be April 2025. And they are currently in the process of selecting what they call the PRO, which is the producers or the organizations that are going to coordinate this work. EPR principle is putting the responsibility in the producer, so all the materials that are being used for what they call PPP, printed packaging, and other materials that are being used in every day, they need to now incorporate into their pricing the cost of recycling those materials. So everything that they produce has to be recyclable. So this is what EPR is going to be, but we are not there yet, and it will take at least two more years in order to know the details on how this will be implemented.
Thank you.
Counselor Dodek?
I have a couple of questions. First to the movers. Is it, since you brought this feel-good resolution to take effect immediately, is it your intent that it also impact on federal and provincial elections? Or is it limited to municipal elections?
I'll let Counselor Croson answer for herself. It was my intent for all elections, so all elections will run the same.
And I concur with that. This is determined to be for all elections, to have it only on private property and not public property.
So bearing in mind that it's well-known that there is a provincial election that's upcoming, and likely some candidates, some who have not announced right now, and some who likely have purchased or ordered signs already, would you not agree that this resolution, if it were to take effect immediately, would be in effect sandbagging potentially those candidates and sort of limiting their ab. sandbagging potentially those candidates and, uh, sort of limiting their ability, uh, to advertise only on private property, even though they had the expectation up until today's date, assuming this passes, that they would be able to use public, uh, property to announce or to advertise their candidacy? Do you not see that as sandbagging?
I can let you know that I have had both public and private conversation with several people running in the upcoming election, and they see the value of signs on private property, because that actually shows you what sort of, um, support you have, and most of them have supported removing them from public property, because they would be equal to everybody.
Okay, and, uh, I'm, I'm glad you answered that way, because that's anecdotal information, and that's exactly what you've done in the preambles, whereas this, whereas that, whereas this and that. You're drawing from anecdotal information that you gathered from yourself, reaching a conclusion and asking council to make a decision today. Is that not correct?
Or council could refer this to governance, which is what I actually would expect to happen, um, to have a further conversation with the community. This is being brought forward for discussion. I could share with you several of the literature reviews I've done. What they've shown is that signs only have a one to two percent chance of, um, changing an election mind. It is incredibly small. Of course, the research does not show if that is on public or private property, but signage has exploded since 2008 across North America and is not being seen, shown to have any real effect on, on the political outcomes. And that is based on research.
Okay, based on your comments, then, so rather than debating the merits of this resolution today, uh, I, 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 I would suggest that you're tacitly agreeing that the best way of dealing with it is to refer it to governance, so they could, uh, have discussions with whoever might be interested in this, and thereafter be brought back to council with the recommendation. Is that what you're in sub, seeking today?
I already posted that on my council Facebook page, that I expected it to be referred to governance, because that is a place then that the public could have a conversation. Um, so yes, I would have no problem with a referral to governance.
Okay, I'm not on Facebook, I rely on signs.
And I appreciate your, your science, um, the wherashes that you take umbrage with? Could you, uh, name the ones you take umbrage with? Most of them seem fairly factual to me, but there may be some that we could...
Well, uh, uh, some of it is like, okay, for example, whereas received complaints. We receive complaints about everything. Are we talking about 10,000 complaints, or talking about 15? The impression left with that is that this is cascading, illegally placed in the right-of-way. Okay, so you're referring the ones that are too close to, uh, for example, in, intersections, but what I'm suggesting is that the wherashes, uh, lead to an incorrect perception that this is a huge problem, whereas in fact, this happens once every four years for one month, and some people who, uh, have no, uh, other way of advertising themselves, whether or not it has an impact on the electorate, may be limited to the signs. So I don't know if this is the right time, uh, to make, uh, I'd say, let's refer this resolution to, uh, SPC, or governance, SPC.
Thank you for the interesting definition of anecdotal.
All right, Counsel Campbell.
Actually, I, this is partly going in another direction, but, and just the fact that, uh, Mr. Mayor, you were talking about, uh, you, you know about signs, because that's your business, but I just wonder, um, oh, he's going, this is good, to Mr. Mayor, um...
No. I was giving you, confirming if this was going to be referred or not, but my apologies.
I just, I just wondered, what is the impact to the sign business if this all of a sudden it said, "We don't want this many sign," I mean, I, I, I don't know if you, something...
Shutting the doors.
No, I just, is it, is it a, is it a big deal for, I imagine it is, it has a...
Absolutely it is. It's probably the best month of the year for sign businesses.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so it is, it would have an impact.
Hundred percent it would.
That's just curious, thank you.
May I add to that, though?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Remember, though, this is not stopping signs. This is stopping signs on public land. You can do as many signs on private land as you possibly want, and as much support as you can get to put signs out. So this is not saying there will be no signs. This is saying, because we've had such issues with signs on public land, that we're saying restricted to private land.
Thank you. Mr. Sanchez.
Just want to follow up. I checked with the staff, uh, the waste and recycling facility and the waste and recycling utility, and they have confirmed that all coroplast signs can now be recycled, so we have a solution for those, as long as they can be separated from the metal stand, and they do that additional work. That's why we typically set up a place at the waste and recycling center to allow for that. They can be recycled, so...
Thank you for that. Uh, Counsel Middleton-Hope. In for debate?
I'm still in for debate, but...
Is this going to be...
I actually do, well, I do have a comment, and I, I certainly...
No, no, no.
No, this would be a question.
Okay.
This will be a question for the movers. It's in regards to the third wheraz, uh, Counsel Krosen. Um, you indicated that you had had conversations with a number of people. There, if, to my knowledge, in the provincial election, there are only four people running. Did you have a chance to talk to all four in regards to a potential impact that this might have vis-à-vis their campaigns that are launched?
Not all four, which is why I said I'd be fine with a, a referral to governance, so people can do, but I have had conversations with people who ran in municipal, provincial, and federal elections of the past, um, and the ones with whom I've spoken have no concern with this, uh, motion.
Okay.
Counselor, and on my behalf, I've only spoken, spoken with one who has announced their campaign, uh, and they were very excited, uh, for this move.
So that they would not have to put additional signage on public property?
Yes.
Okay, the, the last question comment before I, I'm ready for debate, is in regards to distracted driving. Uh, the comment on, uh, this, this is, uh, it's unsafe and there are distractions and, and along the public road, uh, road right-of-way. Well, distracted driving actually occurs, we know from substantial, uh, research on this. It occurs for, uh, not only signage on boulevards and public property, but all signage act as a potential, um, uh, distraction. So to suggest that this, I mean, I don't like them any more than I think anybody else does, but to suggest that they are an, uh, an additional distraction, uh, and that there is research to indicate that, uh, campaign signs on boulevards create an additional distraction, that the research, as I think Counsel Krosen would agree, is specifically, or non-specific in terms of its nature, it talks in terms of distractions for signage in general, not just on public property.
Uh, I, I would agree with that, Counsel Middleton-Hope. One of, one of the issues, I think, that we differ in our community, as opposed to others, is the amount of wind we have. Um, I, I recall, uh, Mayor McGrath Drive during the previous campaign, with signs blowing hither and non and smashing into cars. That was quite a disturbance. Um, hundred percent, uh, signs blowing across Mayor McGrath, uh, across University Drive, across Seineck. Um, if you walk, uh, your dogs in our current dog parks, uh, down in the Cooley's right now, you can still find electric, election signage that has blown into our river valley. Uh, if you walk along, um, 28th Street North, along the, um, the Green Strip along there, you can find still election signs, uh, that have blown down and are cluttering.
They were taken off.
Could have, but...
Yeah, there was, there was a group of, of people that came along and took them all off.
There was also the wind, and I don't think anyone here, uh, that's put up election signs can, can, uh, understate the challenge we have. Every time there's a windstorm, the calls come in, your signs are down. Come fix them, so. We do have different challenges, I think, than other communities.
I'll save my remainder, your worship, for debate.
Haven't put up a single sign, so I wouldn't know what you're talking about, Counsel Carlson. Counsel Dodek.
As, as I said earlier, uh, it was my intention to, uh, refer this to the governance, SPC, although, uh, I, I have to say that I'm, I'm sort of sympathetic to, uh, to this resolution, as I don't like signs, uh, myself, but I, I don't like the fact that there's an immediacy to it, and still, uh, many questions, as was evident by the questions themselves that asked. And it seems to me that most signs, uh, occur during municipal elections. In any event, we don't have one coming up for, uh, two and a half years, so I would suggest that, uh, and would ask for council support to have this referred to governance, SPC, so that it could be a more fulsome discussion, so that it might even be able, i- i- it, it's quite possible that sign owners, uh, might be interested in having their say in it, not too dissimilar to when the private recyclers, uh, got input into whether or not the, the city was going, go into recycling. Of course, they were not, uh, allowed to continue based on the fact that it became an occupied field, but, uh, for similar reasons, I think there should be more discussion than has been.
I think the questions, to your point, a lot of the questions that were being asked and answered now could help the public or those others in, in a standing policy committee. So, I, I, and I know, and probably Counsel Middleton-Hope will even revamp up his debate for said time, or if we do this referral motion, I do have a referral motion on the table, are you okay, did you...
Are you asking me if I support the relief, the resolution?
No, 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 you've, you, you just, you're in the queue here multiple times for debate. Are you able to hold your debate till after the SPC? Is that going to be okay?
Oh.
No.
But will you survive?
Will you survive? Not will you...
Well, I won't, I, if you want it, I won't vote in favor.
So, so, well, and that, and that's fine, but if we're going to do a referral motion so that this debate can happen, or questions can happen with public, it sounds like we've got that on the table. Madam City Clerk, is that proper time here to bring it forward?
Yep, referral motion on the table, it takes precedent, so that's what will be voted on. So it'll be going to governance, I imagine the April governance?
I would really suggest the April governance.
Now, I'll entertain questions on the referral motion, is that correct, Madam City Clerk?
Yep.
Okay, so questions just on the referral, not on the resolution. Counsel Dodek, you have a question on the referral, or are you waiting in debate as well? Okay, you're up. Counsel Carlson, on the referral?
Mr. Mayor, um, through you to, um, probably City Clerk, would there be any challenges, um, uh, or impediments to, to reaching out to at least those candidates in the provincial election who have already, um, made their candidacy known, to see if they have any input? Is that something we could do?
Signs are already printed. Not that I know, but many of them would have them already printed. Sorry.
Sorry, I would need more detail on that question. Reach out to them and...
And, and invite them to, to present any feedback or comment, too.
So direct, we, we, we can do that.
Does it need to be part of the resolution, or can we just sort of, oh, it should be? Would you have any issue, Counsel, about reaching out to the...
Yes, I would have huge issues, because, uh...
I may not have announced.
Well, not only that, but the reason is that, like I said, this is a feel-good resolution. A person is going to be asked, "Do you like motherhood and apple pie?" And they're going to say yes, even though they actually don't like pie or their mother. The point being that, uh, generally speaking, you're going to get, uh, a reply, because most people are against signs anyways, so then, they may not re- reply accurately. So that's my objection.
Headline for the Herald? Counsel Dodek objects to mother pie and, and...
I'm more concerned that he thinks politicians don't speak the truth.
All right, we do, I have no further questions in the, the debate, or in the, in the question, so, uh, the referral motion is on the table. Can I take that as your opening and closing, your mother pie? Okay. And with that question to refer this to, do we have that up? Yes, we do. April 27th, 2023, uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we'll get a roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. Counsel Car- Carlson?
Opposed.
Counsel Krosen?
In favor.
Counsel Dodek?
Uh, in favor.
Counsel Middleton-Hope?
Opposed.
Counsel Palladino?
Favor.
Acting Schmidt-Rempel?
Opposed.
Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel, sorry. Oppose? Thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor Parker?
Opposed.
Mayor Higgins?
Favor.
Counsel Campbell?
In favor.
That carries five to four.
Wow, all right, so that will go to SPC. And we'll just ask the same questions again, and Counsel Middleton-Hope, I hoping that you keep your debate for that time, because I do want to hear it, it's sounding, it's good.
Oh, you had your chance.
Yeah.
All right.
Bylaws, oh, we got nothing for a review by law?
Yeah, we got two forty. So we'll do this one, and then we're going to do the taxi rights after that.
I have a resolution here, unaudited 2022 year-end financial information, so this is again a, a committee submission from Counsel Dodek. Be resolved, city council received the 2022 unaudited financial information report as information. And number two, acknowledge the allocation of waste processing, water and wastewater utility year-end operating surplus to 2022 to 2031, CIP project to reduce future debt financing as per FS six, uh, debt management policy, and approve the reserve transfer of $3 million to airport reserve as presented within the 2022 unaudited report. Uh, open for questions? So, you know, questions, debate, open, question or debate, Counsel Middleton-Hope?
Jesus. Who's supposed to be something?
I'm in a debating mood. Uh, well, it's, I, I guess it's actually a, a question, so it'll go to administration. Um, the allocation of surplus from waste processing, water and wastewater, are they going, is this, uh, the surpluses, do they go back to the BAUs for specified use in support of future funding pressures in these specific areas? As opposed to going back to the MRSR or some other unholy location?
To Mr., uh, through Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Middleton-Hope, so in regards, I'll give it in two components on it. So accumulated surpluses, the remaining surpluses that you see within the report, those amounts get allocated within the accumulated surplus and remain within those utilities. So they get used and for future, um, pressures or capital, um, items within, um, for each utility, and they're specific to those utilities. Um, as for the actual transfers, you'll see that within this report, there's a number of transfers that are in here for waste processing, wastewater and water, um, and water, and wastewater, I should say. Those transfers are actually being allocated per the debt policy into specific approved council CIP projects, instead of, uh, the city going out and getting external borrowings on those, so it's actually reducing our debt component.
Fair enough, so, but those funds will be used, I mean, by the savings that these areas of the corporation generate, those savings will generally be put back into additional projects in those areas of the corporation.
That is correct.
So we're rewarding that type of behavior?
So, um, Mr. Mayor, through Counsel Middleton-Hope, so in this, there is various reasons why the surpluses were, occur. Um, some of them are, you know, increases in the amount of revenue from what is projected, um, from warm years, if you're looking at water or, or industrial components. So it is, I, I wouldn't necessarily say it's rewarding the, in the surplus, but what it would, it is doing is the surpluses are actually preventing future costs in borrowing for those utilities on it. So it actually, um, provides, it goes back to the utilities and actually is a bit of a cost reduction.
I see it as more strategic. I, I see them as being more fiscally responsible, as opposed to just having good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Middleton-Hope. With that, debate, open and close debate, Counsel Dodek, hope, Counsel Middleton-Hope will debate this after you do open.
Okay, uh, well, there's, uh, uh, three components to this, uh, resolution, the first one being the, uh, receiving the 2022 unaudited financial information, uh, report as information. I just want to, for the three people that are watching, um, online, the, uh, unaudited 2022 year-end financial information, uh, it includes firstly, the highlights of the 2022 general fund, the utility fund, and the, uh, reserve-funded operations, and secondly, it also updates, uh, the city's financial position for the year. And secondly, it also updates the city's financial position for the year and December 31, 2022. The audited financial statements will be presented by the independent auditors on April 5th of 2023, is my understanding. The unaudited report also provides information of variances, including with respect to the corporate accounts, department operations, utility-funded operations, reserve-funded operations, and some variances are positive and some are negative, with explanations for these variances contained in this rather detailed report. There's also details of corporate budget contingencies for 2019 to 2022, operating budget initiatives for the same timeframe. There's also detailed statements of reserves, some examples being to acquire off-street parking, the airport, which we'll refer to shortly, cemeteries, and 12 other reserves that are highlighted. Also, it provides an investment summary, a summary of subdivision surplus, off-site account analysis, details of borrowing both external and internal housing fund, GST rebates, major housing grant, and finally, capital maintenance lifecycle information. So that's with respect to item number one. Item number two, I think the question answered given by the city treasurer is questioned by councillor Middleton Hope, basically answer what's involved there. The reference to FS6, a debt management policy, is located at page 74 through 76 of the package, and that's what's referred to there. The third component is to approve the reserve transfer of 3 million to the airport reserve. That, my understanding, comes from 2022 corporate surpluses, and that is needed to continue the operations of the airport, which hopefully will not require input of reserves at some point in the future. That's all I have.
Thank you. I do have a debate. Councillor Middleton Hope?
Thank you. And I guess this is to the, well, it'd be to the mover. Yeah. So it's just in regards to comments regarding the the $3 million to the airport reserve. I would rather that we approach the airport like we have with other areas of the corporation, stagger funding over the course of the four years rather than providing them with $3 million upfront, and require the CEO to demonstrate ongoing need for funding. I'm not in favor of writing a check for four years with limited accountability, and I think that we should insist upon the airport authority aggressively seeking out advertising, sponsorships, and partnerships, and approaching other airlines, both commercial cargo as well as passenger, to determine whether or not there is the potential for increased traffic at our airport. So when I'm talking about some of the challenges that that our airport is facing, I'm certainly in favor of holding the airport more accountable, at least as accountable as they have been held in the past, for the request for $3 million. So as part of that debate, if the city manager, because I see them chomping at the bit over there, and wants to weigh in on that, by all means, please do.
So, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Middleton Hope, just one thing in regards to this, just for clarification. So when when the budget was passed in November for the airport, it was assuming larger transfers coming out of the airport reserve to actually offset the operational costs. What the transfer of $3 million is doing is it's putting that funding in, as councillor Middleton Hope mentioned, in regards to bringing the funding in required over the next four years, so it's set aside for that purpose inside of the reserve, so that the funding is there for both operating and capital expenditures.
Well, yeah, no, I thank you, Mr. Treasurer, I get that. What I'm what I'm suggesting is that there's a high a heightened level of accountability that may be required here, considering some of the challenges that we have faced in areas of the corporation vis-à-vis large sums of infused capital, and then the return on that investment by this body to those areas of the corporation to ensure that they are meeting the expectations that we lay out for them. I get that this is for operating as well as for capital improvements on the airport. I want to know, and I think the public has a right to know, that they are getting good value for money out of this, rather than just throwing money at a at a project that continues to drain funds or siphon funds away from the corporation. So I'm just asking for greater accountability of the funds.
All right. For debate, councillor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. We'll be supporting the the resolution. By and large, it's 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 an informational update for not just for council, but our community to sort of see where the city finances were, but also to have council make some appropriate dispositions of our reserves. I think item number two, using the the year-end operating surpluses to manage future debt financing, I think is is beneficial to the community. It does keep increases to those services down. As we know, debt servicing is becoming more and more expensive, so if we can do it without actually borrowing dollars from an outside agency, I think it's just makes good sense. With the airport, I would like to just stress that this is putting $3,000 into the reserve. It is not, or sorry, 3 million dollars into the reserve to be used as needed for operations and for matching funding for mostly ACAP grants, the airline capital something program. I can't even recall what it stands for anymore, but we do need some funding put aside. The risk of not putting it aside and sort of identifying it as a reserve for the airport is that it would remain in the MRSR and would not have any outside reserve put on it and could be used for other purposes and then not be there when it's necessary for the airport. So this isn't spending it. This is just basically saying this is in reserve for the airport should it be needed. So with that, it will have my support.
Councillor Middleton Hope, you're just in again for debate?
Yeah.
Okay. You're in for debate? Okay, so you're left to debate.
Oh, excellent. So there's there's one other piece to this to this motion that that hasn't been addressed, and it's in regards to the parking reserve funding. So I'll just address that to the city manager as a comment, and if they want to invite any discussion on it, by all means. Have your projections for lost revenues, which you've indicated in the documentation, and increased expenses been passed on to administration, the BRZ, and the heart of our city to consider in their discussions about parking fine revenue. So I know that's a question, but it's, maybe we can go back to question, but that's a piece of the debate. So I just simply want to to be assured that as a part of the direction to the BRZ and the heart of our city and administration, that that information has also been included for them so that they are aware, as this council is, that there are challenges to the parking fine revenue that are that need to be contemplated in any type of decisions regarding future use of either fees or and or fines.
I can probably start answering that, and if city treasurer has something to add, absolutely. Part of the work that we will be doing with the BRZ and the heart of our community groups is to bring into the discussion all the different elements that we're considering for the parking reserve, for parking, and how parking fines are going to be implemented, and what will be the situation. We are currently working internally to get all the details with the city treasurer and get all those different elements to to have a plan before we meet with them and then use that information. We, it's a it's a good question, because we need to consider that the reserve has been declining over the time, and the intent of this was just to help at least recover or stop the bleeding from the reserve and get to a point that is stable. So we will bring those all those options. And again, a good a good reminder as well that we're going to be engaging on the downtown parking, and there is still a possibility to go in other areas to have different elements, but that will be part of the work, absolutely.
Thank you, worship.
All right, I see to close debate.
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment on the third item, the reserve, the reserves. I'm sure nobody likes the fact that we have to set aside $3 million into the airport reserve. Some of that is, or the amount, maybe partially due to the fact that at least one airline that we were initially anticipating would be coming here and starting in December of 2022 at the last second canceled out. But I'm going to suggest, or at least I have belief, that administration is doing what they can to increase revenue from the airport, both in terms of on the air travel end as well as in the commercial end. So I'd ask for council support with respect to the entirety of the resolution. Thank you.
Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? That carries. All right. We will break now for our public hearing at 3 o'clock. So, yeah, we will move on here just quickly. Thank you for your presence, your patience, presence and patience. If you were to come forward with 9.1, I do have a resolution here from acting mayor Schmidt Remble.
Just so everybody knows what's going on, we're bringing forward 9.1, if that's general consent with council.
If that's okay with council? Right? Okay, so be resolved, the city council approved the submission of the 2022 Code of Conduct Compliance Report as provided attachment one to the Alberta Utilities Commission. And we'll turn the time over quickly to Jason and Mr. Durant, I'm sorry, for presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and fellow councillors. What I'm here to do is just to present the 2022 Lethbridge Electric Utility Compliance Report. This is an annual requirement by the Alberta Utility Commission, is due every year by March 31st. And what this just does is it states that we are either in compliance or not compliance with our compliance plan. And under the Alberta Utility Commission regulation, we are required to have a plan which includes training and a way to deal with compliance issues. So what I'm here to do today is just to report out that in 2022, there were no reports of noncompliance. We did not receive any complaints, nothing from the Alberta Utility Commission. So with that, I'm just asking permission, approval from city council to file this report with the Alberta Utility Commission.
And we did hear about this here at a previous meeting, obviously, that was came in, and we know this is a regular occurrence.
This is a regular, I remember being here last year at this time.
Exactly. All right, with that, I have no questions, and open debate. Acting Mayor?
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for coming back and presenting to us again. As per subsection 33.2 of AUCE Code of Conduct Regulation, the Lethbridge Electric Utility is required to prepare a Code of Conduct Plan to ensure adherence to the AUC's Code of Conduct Regulation. A compliance report must be submitted annually by the LEU and the AUC, summarizing compliance to the Code of Conduct Plan. This report summarizes the findings of compliance to the plan in 2022 and must be presented to the LEU Board of Directors prior to the end of March for submission, and that's what we are doing, is approving that report today. If there are no questions, I will call for the vote.
No questions? Questions been called, all in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very much.
Appreciate your patience. And one last, if I could, 10.1 is just a submission from Ms. Amies, Executive Director of Downtown Lethbridge BRZ, request for Downtown Lethbridge BRZ Zone 2023 Budget Decision. Are we okay if I bring this forward as well? I'm sorry, I just said 9.1, but I see Ms. Amies is here as well, so if we can get that, any questions you may have for Ms. Amies? Councillor Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just curious, in in the executive summary that was provided, it does say that council may add to the estimates and allowance for non-collection and administrative costs. If that was necessary, would that come as a recommendation or an ask? It just seemed odd to me that it was like council might, could do this, but I wasn't sure if you were asking us to do this, or if at some point it became necessary, it would be asked of council? Because I don't see that being added right now.
I believe we would be asking council.
Would be, or you?
We are.
You're asking?
Asking council.
To add an allowance, an allowance for the non-collection and administrative costs? Are those included in the current budget, or would we have to add those?
No, they've been included.
Perhaps I didn't see them.
First first column on the left-hand side, under the revenue, city of Lethbridge admin costs, city of Lethbridge bad debt allowance, city of.
Okay, thank you. So it's the bad debt allowance of 6,300?
Yep.
Thank you. And is that based on a past bad debt, or is that just a percentage?
No, that's that's an actual debt. That is levy that we have not been able to collect that has probably gone to collections via the city.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, councillor Middleton Hope?
Thank you, Ms. Amies, for the the information. I just have a one question. I've looked at at the statement, and we're looking at clean sweep at 425,000, needle debris collection at 117,000 and change, an ambassador program at 100,000, $100,000. That's 642,463 dollars. So can you perhaps, this is an opportunity to provide us with some insights, at least me anyway, in regards to what our value for money money is for these programs?
Well, absolutely, if we want to start with the ambassador program. This is a year-round program that really ramps up in the summertime when we tend to hire between three and four ambassadors. These folks are considered to be our street engagement team. They go out during the summer and create a great deal of content for our social media channels, which we use during the summer and then store for the rest of the year. They're also out there meeting and greeting folks who are on the streets in the downtown, providing information, handing out coffee shop cards sometimes. They run a lot of our events and initiatives over the summer. They're very involved in our farmers markets, our signature event, which is the Celebrate Downtown Awards in August. They, yes, they are typically university students.
Budget $100,000 for four students?
Well, it's not just the four students. Each student costs around $11,000 for the summer.
That's wages.
Yes. So the rest is money that allows us to to grow our initiatives, to put on things like our food truck festival, our, as I said, our farmers markets, any other events and initiatives that go on over the year.
That also include flyers, pamphlets?
Absolutely.
Literature?
All of our marketing. Yep. Yep. That is, like, it's called the ambassador program, but basically it covers all of our marketing and communications and our ambassadors.
Thank you. The other two we'll just leave for the time being. Thanks.
All right, I see no further questions. So councillor Campbell?
Thank you, your your honor, honor? Worship, it's worship, isn't it? Sorry. I'm sitting from beside what's his name here? Anyway, the this this is in accordance with the bylaw that the DBRZ will, on before February 16th of each year, hold an annual budget meeting, and budget is to be submitted to city council for review. This budget was approved by the downtown BRZ, and and now it's up to us to approve that what they've already approved. Am I missing anything there? I think that's basically what you're here for.
We we had our budget meeting on February 7th. Membership passed the budget as presented, and I'm now here today asking you folks to also pass.
Absolutely. I will, unless there's any other questions. I will, unless there's any other questions or any debate, I will ask for my colleague's support.
Question has been called. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience, Ms. Amies.
My pleasure. Thank you.
We will now break for the public hearing.
Good afternoon, and thank you for your patience. We're now going to deal with bylaw 6399, a public hearing. I call upon this public hearing of bylaw 399, land use bylaw amendment regarding 1020 12th Street Avenue Street. This procedure for the following here, this will be the following procedure for today's hearing. We will begin by calling on our Development Services, Ms. Oreo, Community Planner, to provide background to the case. Anyone else who wishes to speak on this bylaw will then be called upon. We will then ask three times if there's anyone else who would like to make a presentation on this bylaw. City Council will then have the opportunity to ask questions of the presenters. The hearing will then be closed. Consideration of second and third reading will be made by City Council immediately following the public hearing. I now call upon Ms. Oreo to provide the background to the case. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Your Worship and members of council. Today I am bringing forward bylaw 6399, a proposed land use bylaw amendment for the property at 1020 12A Street South. Next slide. The applicant is Kyle Worser. He is with Avonlea Homes, and he's here to make a presentation and answer any questions you may have. The purpose of the application is to allow for the development of up to four residential units in the building form of a duplex, with each side having the option for secondary suites. This is achieved by rezoning from low-density residential to direct control. Next slide. The property is located in the Fleawood neighborhood, as outlined in, with the green star in the map. This is an older neighborhood that, based on the building age and condition, is experiencing redevelopment. And this neighborhood is also primarily residential, as you can see in the aerial photo to the right. The site is surrounded by mostly single attached dwellings and a duplex to the south, which you can see in this photo, based on the footprint of the building. Next slide. This is the view from 12A Street South, the front of the building. Next slide. And this is the rear of the property. Next. Again, this is a primarily residential neighborhood, and as you can see, the site in question today, as well as the surrounding properties, are zoned low-density residential, and we are rezoning to direct control. Next slide. In terms of background of the site, as mentioned, it does have the RL District, which allows a maximum of two dwelling units in the form of a single attached dwelling with a secondary suite, or a two-unit dwelling, which is a duplex. The purpose of bylaw 6399 is to allow for the development of a duplex with the option for each of the duplex units to have secondary suites, which totals four dwelling units. Next slide. To arrive at the proposal before you today, the applicant hosted a tea party back in September of 2022 at this open house residence from within 60 meters, which is the notification distance the city follows, attended. We had neighbors that are directly adjacent to this property and neighbors that are farther away. We generally got questions about parking, building height, and setbacks. There were concerns about some of these topics, particularly whether all the parking required would be met through this rezoning. The answer was yes. Again, building height questions. We also noted that there was particular interest in the appearance of the building, which at the tea party, the applicant did bring elevations, which the neighbors were in support of. Following this application, or this tea party, the applicant did submit an application for rezoning, and based on the comments we heard at the tea party, particularly the importance of the appearance of the building, we identified the direct control district to be the most suitable district to rezone to. And that's because the DC District is the only district that allows us to include any elevations, which provides certainty to the neighbors of what the building will look like in the future. Next slide. So this is the front elevations of the building, which were provided and shared at the tea party. And this is included in the direct control bylaw, which means that the applicant knows exactly what will be expected of him during the development and building permitting stage. So this is exactly what will be built. Next slide. So in addition to including the elevations, we, in efforts to ensure that the proposed building fits in with the surrounding properties, we have carried over the building height, building setback requirements that exist today in the low-density residential district to the new direct control bylaw, which means that without a rezoning, someone could build to the specs that you see in the previous elevations. Next slide. This proposal aligns with SSRP policy related to the efficient use of land and the importance of innovative housing designs, as well as a range of densities and housing types in the city. Next slide. This also aligns with the MDP with similar policy themes, so increasing residential densities in existing areas in a manner that respect build form and character, and again, the efficient use of land. Next slide. So in addition to the open house hosted in September 2022, I sent out two notification letters to residents within 60 meters. The first notification letter notified residents that an application had been made. The second notification letter notified residents that this public hearing had been set, and the details on how to get involved. Beyond the open house, I did not receive any calls or questions about this proposal. In addition, the city also published newspaper ads in the Lethbridge Herald to notify the general public of this proposal. Again, no comments were received from that. Next slide. So in conclusion, this proposal aligns with overarching policy, the SSRP and the MDP, and planning and design supports this amendment to direct control, and recommends that City Council accept this information for the public hearing of bylaw 6399. This concludes my presentation. I am available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oreo. I now call upon the applicant, Mr. Worser, to make a presentation, or to answer questions, either or.
Yeah, good afternoon. My name's Kyle Worser. I am the owner of the property here. Like Genesis had mentioned, Avonlea Homes would be the construction company that would be doing the project itself. Yeah, so this first photo is just an inspirational image. I wanted to start with that. As you can see, it's very similar to the front elevation blueprint that Genesis already showed in her presentation. Everything color-wise, material-wise will be very similar. So I understand that in mature neighborhoods, appearances, you know, it's important to these people that have been living there for a long time, and I wanted to make sure that it's a very nice product that's going into their neighborhood. So I did enhance the front. Instead of just going with a lot of vinyl, we added a lot of front brick, that's like a veneer brick, the wood, powder blue shutters, and then the dormers into the roof line. Next slide, please. So yeah, the proposal, like she had already mentioned, is a duplex with the ability to have secondary suites in the basement of the property. Those entrances would be down the side of the five-foot side yard. Benefits to the community that I find would be housing affordability and availability, especially near our hospital here. It's within walking distance, so I think it could be a great spot for young professionals or people working at the hospital. Again, I think it's a positive investment into the neighborhood. With the design and the look of the property, I think it's only going to help enhance the values of my neighboring properties. And then the other thing, tax collection. For the city right now, I think the property that's there brings in about $1,700 a year if this build were to be put forward. Total, I figure it'd be somewhere around $9,000 to $10,000 a year, give or take, depending on, you know, market value, of course. Next slide, please. So about the site, like she mentioned, this is the house here. It was a condemned house. It was, I would call it a hoarder house. The foundation is well beyond repair. It's not sound or safe to build on. So the idea of doing a renovation or anything is not quite possible. The other thing being that it's vacant, it is a very unsafe place where there could be vandalism or fire. And positives with this specific lot and why I was attracted to it, to build this type of property, it's a 50-foot lot, so typically you'll see with builders and developers in filled neighborhoods, they look for a 50, where you can have a 20-foot duplex on either side, and then you have a nice five-foot side yard between the neighbors. And then, of course, again, close proximity to the hospital, within walking distance. And then it is right beside another duplex, so I feel it, you know, kind of fits in with that. Next slide, please. This was us here at the open house back in September. So at the open house, I actually had the blueprints done ahead of time, so I had everything designed fully, full working blueprints ahead of time for the open house. So everything from the basement suites to the upper floors, front elevation, reelevation, garage sizes, parking pads, it was all there. So we were able to see the full design. It did seem to have a really good feedback at the open house. There were lots of questions, of course, like Genesis mentioned. One, obviously, being parking. I understand that's always a big thing for these mature neighborhoods, and I get that. And so on the back alley, I'm doing double garages on each side. They're oversized doubles. And then on the front, there will be a single pad for each potential secondary suite. So you'll have a total of six off-street parking stalls for this one lot. Next slide, please. So again, you guys already saw this, but that is pulled from the exact blueprint, and so that will stay the way it is if it does get approved with direct control. So if it were to be approved, what comes next? The demolition permit is 95% complete, just hasn't been finished. Of course, we're waiting for today's verdict, and we would probably start with demolition as soon as possible, just because, again, I feel it's pretty unsafe the way it is right now. Building, as soon as frost comes out of the ground, so it would be like an April-May start, and hopefully have it done by September, October of this year. and hopefully have it done by September, October of this year. Again, Avenue has been around for almost thirty years. They're a reputable builder in the city. I know that they are efficient in their build practice and cycle time. So hopefully it wouldn't be too much of a burden to the neighbors for the six, seven months that it would take to build. The next thing would be subdividing lots. So technically, it is a duplex. There's only two titles, not four titles. And so I would have to subdivide the lot into two separate lots, two twenty-fives. And then my plan is currently, I would probably be moving into the one side and we would sell the other side, so. Next slide. Yeah, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about design, function, any of that stuff when you guys have a chance. Thank you.
Very much appreciate the presentation. I'll now ask anyone in the audience who wants to speak for or against the development in front of us at this time to now come to the microphone. I do ask that when you do come up, limit your presentation to no more than five minutes. Second of all, please state your name for the city clerk or the deputy city clerk, just so we have it for the record. And lastly, if something has been stated that doesn't need to be restated, just be mindful of that as well. Otherwise, I would now call anyone to come to the mic.
Buddy? I've just got a couple of questions. Is this a duplex or a fourplex, is my concern?
So what we're going to do is, I should have stated this, so when you ask the questions, we will put them down, and the members of council will ask the questions on your behalf after. So when you ask the question, we will make sure that they get asked. So state all your questions or state your concerns and all that, so we as a council know it.
Say what I need and get the hell back there.
No, you're more than welcome, because we may have questions.
No, I got what you mean.
We're going to ask your questions on your behalf, okay?
Okay. Again, my name is Linda Runquist.
Welcome, Linda.
First question is, is this a duplex or a fourplex? And if it indeed is a fourplex, does this create a segue for fourplexes being built in the neighborhood?
Very much. And we have those questions written down here. And anyone else would like to feel free to come to the microphone and state your concerns or your support or your questions?
Hello, everyone. My name is Paige LeMond, and I live on the block. I was one of the ones that got the letters. And yeah, it's a really important question. I'm living through what it's like to have what I would have called an unregulated duplex. Right across from me is a duplex that Howard many years ago got built. And there's no driveways, but there's garages. And what's happened is that he ends up having to be a renter renting to four separate individuals in one place. And so my very first question or concern is that if it's not clearly dictated, it's all about parking. Anyway, my number one concern is about the parking. And so whether you call it a duplex or a fourplex, what protection does a person have that the landlord isn't going to rent to four separate young men that live in the one side? And in the other one across the street from me, it's the grandmas live there, and then there's the spouses, and it's just an extended generational family. And that brings a ton of vehicles in there. And when you're in, we're in little wartime houses that were not designed. I mean, to me, you had a little postage-styzed stamp house there. And now we're saying, hey, no worries, it's not even going to be a blip if we put in something that has a potential to have eight cars. And just because you say it doesn't mean it happens. And what I mean is, I can put garages in the back. The guy across the street says, well, park off the alley a little bit there. They don't do it. And so it's one thing to create a monster, and then there'll be nobody to police it. And so now, again, what you've done, so in my case, I'm on the corner, so I'm a little bit luckier because I have that corner access boulevard. But of course, I don't, the four guys that live, this isn't about the guys either. We're lucky they're nice guys. Four guys that live there, they, you know, are now bumped up against the other side that has, you know, mama, dad, and everyone else. They have to move to my side. There's no choice. The guy behind them, he's got to park his truck over. To say that it's nothing else, I have no doubt that he can build a beautiful home. That's not it at all. But the logic of it, like I said, and saying, you know, and even in the way it was brought ahead, it was almost as if to say, yeah, we're casually just going to be putting a duplex. It just seemed really, I'm not saying subversive, but it certainly, I mean, people do these things for money. Of course, they're going to want four suites, not two. I mean, I've been a landlord. I have rental properties myself. I understand. I'm trying to make money. He's trying to make money. That's the only reason to do it. And that's fine, but not at the expense, like I said, of, you know, if you've spent any time, one of the other things, if you spend any time in a neighborhood, you also know that, I mean, you know, we're in an alley, you know, we're dealing with drug dealers. We're dealing with all kinds of things in our little neighborhood that already. And trying to, like I said, I don't care about extra people parking or whatever it is. But again, somebody looked at that and said, here, we're going to take a tiny little house. There was a reason that they're tiny and they're put together like that. It's because, and there wasn't room made in the front, and you can't make people park in the back. So I just want to, you know, say that it's wrong on, you know, and I'm living it. Like I said, I don't have to look for any, you know, you guys can drive by and, you know, take a look. Bring my trailer home, just to load it up. It's, you know, I'm lucky if I can, you know, to get. And I bought a corner lot because I wanted it. This coming down, it'll bump everything up even around even more. So I'm just here to say I don't care who the builder is. I don't care how nice the house is. It doesn't fit. It doesn't work, and it totally affects, you know, our quality of life. And him saying, it was funny, he says, well, maybe he'd move in on one side. Because one of my concerns was, again, it leaves it to the neighborhood to police these things. If you haven't got an owner occupied in something or wherever, who is going to be the one that's going to police the parking or whether they go into the garage or not? And you know what? We don't need more of that. Like I said, we're calling on the drug dealers. We don't need to be calling on our neighbors just because, you know, we're overrun for parking, so thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience? And please, just, you're welcome.
Hi, council. My name is Carla Pilling, and I grew up in this neighborhood. And then when I got married, we moved into the neighborhood. I was the key role to get our alley paved. So I have a concern when the construction starts, are they going to destroy what I worked hard for? And I literally, it took to the last forty-five minutes to get the last signature, which was from the owner of that lot that we're talking about right now. I got his signature the very last, and I rushed it here to get it in time to get our alley paved. I love the alley because it keeps the dust down. My husband can drive his Camaro. It's all great. The other thing is, is the parking. So we have a duplex that's on the other side. And on one side of the duplex, there's already four members of the family living there. And they're already down in towards my parking spot. So when we get fourplex in there and then eight more parking, then that means, do I got to park at Fleetwood Boden in order to get home? Or am I going to have to, like, buy a parking spot downtown or something like that? We already have a double car garage and a carport, and I'm the only one that parks in front of our house. But the parking is the biggest thing for me and the traffic that would be in that area. We are an older neighborhood, and like I said, I grew up in that neighborhood. We bought, my mom and dad bought in seventy-two. And so we've been there for quite some time. And when we had the TE party, we were all excited because we just wanted a new family. We wanted a new home in that residential area. And we were, the other thing is, is that when he says he's going to live in there, like, I mean, we do, we have issues in the neighborhood. Like, we have the cops twenty-four-seven in our neighborhood right now, watching other houses. And so we just don't need all the extra activity. So yeah, my concern is, is that I just, I'm worried about the construction in the alley, if it's going to destroy our alley, and the parking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to make a presentation? Welcome.
I'm the one that's been living there since seventy-two. My concerns is.
Your name is?
Ale Pilling. My concern is that it is a family neighborhood. We have the school within a block. Yes, we do have the hospitals, and we are very close to downtown access. But it has been a family neighborhood for all these years. My other concerns are, what's going to happen to my taxes? What's going to happen to the value of my property? And my other concern is, with a possible eight people living in this duplex, that means twelve more garbage bins in our alley floating down the back lane. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pilling. Anyone else who wants to speak at this time? Guessing these ladies are leaving. Feel free to speak. Perfect. For a second time, is there anyone else in the audience who wants to speak on this development? Yeah, just if you, just make sure you come to the microphone, just because we do have people online as well, so.
Yeah, just the parking.
And your name?
Tanner Pankers. Just the parking kind of concerns me, but other than that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much for that lengthy presentation. Thank you very much. Once again, is there anyone else who wants to speak on this development at this time for us? Oh, yep, and welcome.
Alex Sinclair. I guess my question would be, it seems like the lot size is incredibly small for a fourplex, because that's really what it is. It's not a duplex. It's a fourplex. It's a conforming fourplex. And I think it has to be called for what it is. I mean, I'm like Paige, I'm a landlord, and yeah, I'd like to maximize my revenue. I couldn't imagine building a fourplex on that size of property. To me, it doesn't make any sense. And I couldn't, I would love to know how many properties in that area, conforming fourplexes there are. There's some non-conforming, I get that. But I'd love to know how many conforming fourplexes there are on a fifty-by-one-twenty. Thank you.
Anyone in the community can speak on this. They're more than welcome to. And we also have correspondence that's been sent to us via email and letters as well.
Hi, councilors. So my mom.
Your name is?
April Shonburn.
Thank you.
My mom lives on 12th Avenue South by the South Side Dairy Queen. And it's just been single-family homes for most of her life that she's lived there. And next door to her, they turned a single-family house into a duplex. And on the other side is a duplex that they turned into a fiveplex. So needless to say, that has influenced all of the parking. There is a car that's parked in front of her house that's been there since summer of last year and has never moved. And it's okay. You can park on the street. It's everybody's street. Anybody can park there, so we don't complain. But it's the garbages as well. They don't bring them into their yard like they're supposed to. The bylaw is that you bring the garbage into your yard. My mom is elderly, and there's lots of times when she comes out of her garage that she then has to go pick up all the garbage cans, because we do have wind in Lethbridge. And it's everywhere, and it blows, and, you know, I feel sorry for her that she has to go put everybody's garbage back before she can go driving. End of story. I just feel sorry for you folks.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wants to speak on this development at this time? For a second time, and for a third and final time, seeing none, I will now entertain questions from members of City Council. Counselor Crowson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My question is for Ms. Kevia Oreo. I believe I know the answer to this, but I just want confirmation. There is no area redevelopment plan yet for Fleetwood, is there?
That's correct.
So we have no guiding principles yet for that neighborhood. Is it in the queue to get a plan?
Yes, Fleetwood Neighborhood is part of, one of the neighborhoods that are identified as part of the Central Neighborhood Study, which is our guide for our timeline of completing area redevelopment plans. So that is coming up.
It is, and be an option for the community to have their say about what they want their community to be in the future. But unfortunately, it isn't here now. Thank you. May I ask the applicant a question now?
Good afternoon.
Thank you very much for coming. With regards to what you've heard, parking is one of the number one concerns. What do you have to say in response to what you've heard from members of the community? How would you address the parking concerns that you've heard?
Well, a couple of things that I did with the, like, the function of the build is, the garage, a lot of times, especially infill builders, I find, will build a garage that's, say, twenty by twenty-two. So it's like your minimum double, right, just to get by on the code and pass it with the parking requirements? Mine is a, I believe, a twenty-two by twenty-four, so I made it more than sufficient to fit a bigger SUV, a truck, you know, those sort of things, so that there's really no excuse for someone, if they have a bigger vehicle, to be parking on the street. And then on top of that, like I mentioned before, each side would have an additional parking pad in the front. So when I drove, well, I walked each of the letters to each of the neighbors for the open house and just looking at what is currently there for parking for each of the houses, I would say you're looking at one, maybe two parking places for each of the RL residences. So this year, you're going to have three per side. I feel like it's going above and beyond what is currently there. I obviously can't control, you know, what people do with their vehicles or where they park it. If we sell to one side, you know, I have no control over that. But I do understand where they're coming from. I know parking is, it's an issue for me where I live now too, and I'm in a new development area, right? It's just always how it goes. But I feel like with the large garages on each side and then the, you know, pad in the front as well, it gives more than sufficient uses for whoever buys it and lives there to park there.
Thank you. I'll step out at this point, Deputy Mayor, and let others ask their questions.
Thank you. I'll just ask one quick question. It's on top of my mind here and to Development Services. The first presenter talked about the concern from things going from a duplex to a fourplex and things, how they move like that. And in the presentation here, it says, it says right here, the purpose of bylaw for development of the duplex with the option for each duplex to have a secondary suite allowing a total. What triggers that and what would happen for that to occur?
This would happen at the development permitting stage. We have, we give them the option or the opportunity to build up to four units, and that's the discretion of the applicant. And we are calling it, I did refer to it as a duplex, because the elevations do, does have the appearance of a duplex. And because it's a direct control bylaw, that can't be changed.
So it's not a matter of you start off with a duplex, the neighbors are all good, and then you later on do something, it could all be done at once. So you really don't know what the impact will be of a fourplex, because you would already be given that, right?
That's correct. And we also can't control how property owners utilize their property. It could be that they purchase a side of the duplex with a secondary suite, but they don't actually use it or rent it out. They use it for their private household.
Thank you. Calzun Palladino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of my questions were answered, actually, very well. Thanks. I'm surprised there isn't a site plan available today. But if, depending on how I answer these questions, I can pretty much draw one out in my head. What are the side yard dimensions on this thing, from property line to the side of the building?
Yeah, so from the building to the property line, it's five feet on either side. Minimum requirement is four feet, so there's an additional foot there. And it's all going to be done in concrete with a retaining wall on either side, so is that.
Back for a set of stairs to go down or something?
Yeah, yeah. And the part of the design with this law especially is, you could tell by the one photo of the current house, it does have a bit of a rear sloping lot. And so it actually is a partial walkout lot, which, you know, probably doesn't make a difference to them, but it's just more, a lot more functional. Your windows can be that much bigger. It doesn't feel like a basement, et cetera, yeah.
And the total number of bedrooms anticipated on all four units?
Good question, yeah. So that was one thing that came up as well. And being that I've been in building and land development for eleven years, I can tell you that. So there's three up, one down. That's it. So on a, if you were to do the. That's it. So on a, if you were to do this in a, you know, if we didn't call it, let's say, legal suites and you just rented it out to a buddy in your basement, this type of floor plan and design would be exactly this. You'd have three up, one down. So it's not, I'm not cramming additional bedrooms in to try and maximize rent. These properties are going to be, I would say, a premium price, because infills are very expensive to build, between demolition, servicing, abatement, just to get things going. And so these are designed to go to young family, professionals, someone who, you know, it wouldn't make a lot of sense on a return basis for an investor.
A young fellow like myself?
Yeah, exactly.
Have the three-bedroom and then supplement the mortgage or pay the mortgage with the suite downstairs?
Well, like I said, I've been in the building industry for eleven years and what we're finding right now is, especially with a lot of the migration coming to Alberta from Ontario and B.C., is there's a lot of multi-generational families, so that's where I think the term "mother-in-law suite" comes from. We call it "legal suite" because I'm trying to be technical and keep it, you know, fair, so that they know exactly what they're getting. But yeah, a lot of families that we see are, have a mother-in-law or a mother that's, wants to live with them. And so it may not be rented. It may be, you know, that's, again, something I can't fully control for...
Of course. What is the maximum height allowable in the land use by law and how high is this building? Grade to peak, I guess, is what...
Maximum allowance for properties in RL District is ten meters, and this proposal is within that.
How will recycling garbage and organic tubs, how many will be required?
It will be one per, per unit, so one for the sides of the duplex and one for the secondary suites if they're applied for.
So if you got green, blue, and black, how many is that in total?
Twelve.
I think that's it for now. Oh, one other question. Sorry, there was amenity space between the, between the garages in the rear and the back of the house. How much space is left there?
Between the garage and the, and the house? I can tell you right now. You got about twenty-two feet, which is a sta, oh, sorry, that's to the deck, so you'd have another ten. You'd be thirty-two feet, thirty-two feet from the garage to the back of the house.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilor Dorek?
Yes, a question to the applicant is, you're asking to go from an RL to the direct control, and in reality, you're asking for four separate residences. Now, you've indicated that you were going to have two double-car garages in the back, which is four parking spaces, and two pads in the front, which makes it six in total. But the reality is that you can't control the number of cars that people may have or where they're going to park. Isn't that fair to say? Sorry?
Yes, that's fair, yeah.
And, thank you. Now, my question is to the city presenter. And I've asked this question many times and I'm going to ask it again. One of the reasons that we have designations, zoning designation, low-density residential, is to give notice, not only to prospective purchasers, but people who are residents in the neighborhood, that they can rely, unless someone comes to council for a change in use, that the folks that are going to be building on lots that may become available to be built on, that it would be low-density residential. And in this case, that would have been, if it remains low-density residential, a maximum duplex as a permitted use. Would that be fair to say?
Yes. We, the Land Use Bylaw is intended to provide certainty to both applicants, developers, and surrounding neighbors. And you're right, this is only challenged when we receive rezoning applications, which is a property right every person in the city has.
But you agree with me that those people were entitled to rely on this being a low-density residential, because that's the zoning it had for many, many, many years?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Carlson?
Deputy Mayor, Ms. Hevia Oreo, you might want to stay there for a minute. I think I heard during your presentation that the only reason this is coming in front of us is to, because of the two suites, possible suites downstairs, correct? And I think I heard you say that a single-family house or even a duplex of this exact same dimensions, exact same number of bedrooms, everything could be built without coming in front of council. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
They wouldn't be required to put any off-street parking in or a garage or two double garages for that? They could just build a duplex with three bedrooms up, one down? Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And for parking, they would require, require two parking stalls per side. So that's a maximum of four parking spaces. Because we are allowing secondary suites for additional two units, each one requires one parking stall if they have less than, or one or less than one bedrooms. So if they were to have two bedrooms, then the parking requirement increases. But as Kyle stated, the basement suites only have one bedroom.
So this would actually provide more parking than, than a duplex going in with three up, one down?
Yes, yeah.
Would provide, so there's actually...
More parking with potentially the same number of bedrooms as a duplex without suites.
Thank you. And I thought, I just want to make sure that I've asked all of the questions that were asked from the presenters. I think, forgive me if I didn't get the right names with the right questions. Someone asked, Ms. Hevia Oreo, you're probably going to stay there. I think they asked if, if this lot size was, was common for a fourplex. I know there's one just down the street from me that is a fourplex on actually a smaller lot. So is, is this lot size common for fourplexes or would this be out of the ordinary?
Thank you for the question. For two-unit dwellings in, under the RL, the minimum parcel size is four-hundred-and-sixty-five-point-five meters squared. What the applicant is providing is actually, what is it, five-hundred meters squared. So it's actually a larger lot for, for this property than what is required under the RL District.
But we do have other fourplexes on smaller lots, is that what...
Not fourplexes, but building type. We're talking about a duplex building type.
Okay, thank you. And I think, I think I asked all the questions I wrote down, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Your words are, I mean, I'm trying to make sure fairness, everyone's questions get asked and all that. There was a question or a concern in regards to the alley demolition. There's a lot of money. People, they fill out these things and they take a lot of pride and they finally get the thing paved. Are you planning to do anything in that area that could cause possible damage? And if so, tell us.
Yeah, I mean, obviously with, you know, demolition and then construction of a new property like this, there's a lot of heavy machinery that's going to have to go in. I have no problem guiding trades and trying to facilitate them to go to the front. But of course, without blocking out, blocking off the entire alley, I probably wouldn't be able to, you know, fully, you know, promise or guarantee that to anybody. But the damages, I guess, would be on me if, if things were done to the alley. And just for the record, I mean, that's another reason why I like the lot is because it's a paved alley and that's, that's very nice in a, you know, older developed neighborhood, right? Along with that, the alleyway and the garbage and recycling bins, I feel for the lady who's, you know, we live in Lethbridge and the wind blowing stuff everywhere. I'll just say that my garage is on the east side, so the wind is only going to blow it into my property, I think. So, but yeah, I, I hear what they're saying and I, and I agree. And, sorry, back to your point that with the alley, I want to keep it intact as much as they do, because that's where I would be driving on every day as well, so.
And I don't want to be that guy, but I'm going to be that guy through the city manager. If there is any damage to the alley by the proponent, of course, they would be liable for repairs and all that. Am I correct?
I will answer that, yes. While we were in this conversation, I actually checked with the Transportation Department to make sure that we had that answer, and yes. If the alley has been damaged by a contractor or somebody doing work, they will be responsible for the repair.
Very much. Councilor Dorek?
Let's see, the city presenter again. One of my colleagues was trying to make a distinction between the number of parking for a duplex and number for a four-family resident. But as, if this is approved today, right, you can have four families, twelve bins versus a duplex, which would be two families and six bins. Is that fair to say?
That's correct.
Right. And of course, you can't control the number of residents that could be in a family. So if you've got parking for four required for a duplex and six being offered for a fourplex, the reality is, based on experience in residences or people who live in duplex, you're going to have less people, less cars in a duplex than you would in a fourplex. Wouldn't that be a generalization that you would agree with?
I can speak about what is required in the Land Use Bylaw. And the bylaw requires one parking space per dwelling unit that has one, one bedroom. Anything higher requires two bedrooms.
I understand that. What I'm saying is, doesn't common sense suggest to you that if there's more families living in a residence, there would be more cars?
When we talk about the Land Use Bylaw, we talk about built form and buildings and we can't speak about household behaviors.
The Land Use Bylaw right now, the current Land Use Bylaw is RL. And you're seeking an accommodation to increase that by a factor of two. Is that fair to say?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this question will be twofold, one through the city manager to Mr. Sanchez. Garbage and recycling pickup, front or back at this location, do we know?
I will need to check again with the staff. My first impression being an old neighborhood, this is being done on the back, at that side, at the alley.
I see some, some people in the backseat of the car with their heads going like this, yes? Okay, good. The back, so this then is to, is to the developer. As I, as you indicated, there's going to be two double-car garages at the back. Can you clarify the width of those garages? Are they forty-six feet in total or are they forty-eight feet in total?
Forty-four.
Forty-four feet in total. Okay. So if the recovery of waste and compostables and recycling is to be done at the rear, imagine you're living there, where are you going to put the multiplication of these bins times four? So for recycling, for garbage, for compostable, where, where will these bins go?
Good question again. Because I'm planning on living in one of the sides, I've thought about a lot of this. And so again, the garage is, it's a twenty-two by twenty-six. There's plenty of room in there for the bins to be put inside for the primary owner on the upper part. If you were to rent the basement and you had a tenant living there and they wanted their own bins, the side yard between, say, your fence and your garage would facilitate enough space so that they could nicely park their bins, again, between the garage and the fence. So, and that's all at the back, very accessible.
Thank you. I don't want to mischaracterize that, that question. And I'm not quite sure who would be able to answer this. But is there a requirement for each one of the fourplexes to have three bins each?
I actually live in a suite right now, brand-new, done by Evan Lee, and our whole block is suited places. And no, you, you don't. Most of them actually don't have separate, like, two sets of garbage, recycling. We don't have compost.
So in this particular context, then, irrespective of whether they have four units, they would only have sufficient bins for two units? Is that what you're saying?
It would be an option to just have your two sets instead of having four sets if you didn't feel you needed the extra bins.
Hey. Sanchez, would you like to add to that?
Yes, I can clarify. The applicant is correct. In this case, the bare minimum that they need to have is two sets, one for each side. The secondary suite, if that's a secondary suite, they can opt in in order to, at this point in time, with the current bylaw and the conditions that we have, if there is one family that is living there and there is an extended family living in the basement, they could use one set. So that will be three bins for that side of the, of the house, right? But again, we can control what we can control. If thinking on the overall picture, it could be four families and then those four families will be required to have one set of bins for each one of those units. So that will be the worst-case scenario.
What would, what would create four separate families? Different last names? How, how would you know?
So that will be if they have a family living on the main floor, the three bedrooms that they apply, and then they rent the basement or the one bedroom to a separate person that does not belong to that family. Right now, there is no formal requirement, to my knowledge, to have those secondary suites. We're working in that process because you want to make sure everybody's part of the, of the system. But when there is a legal suite, and this is, in this case, it will be a legal suite, that requirement, once that is being used by two separate families or two separate units, they will need to have their own set of bins in order to comply with, with the program in place.
One last question then to the, to the developer. Would both units up and down require utilities in separate names? Would there be separate lines of utilities going into the building?
Again, yes. So in the past, it's been an optional thing as well, because these are only two titles and not four titles. We only have to provide two sets of utilities. The way I'm designing it is going to have four separate utilities, which is more costly. But the, the reason I'm doing it is because, again, like he mentioned, these are fully legal suites. I don't know if you guys have ever seen it, but a lot of times, guys are just going in and they don't have to pay the fifty-five-hundred-dollar rezoning fee. They don't have to do the months of work. They don't have to do the open houses and come to you guys to ask for permission. They just rent out their basement, right? And it doesn't meet egress with windows. It doesn't have a second entrance, fire code, all that other stuff. So I'm trying to do everything by the book and fully is, you know, as best as my abilities can be. And, and that is, goes along with utility servicing, to have it completely separated. And so there will be four, is the way I'm designing it. Yeah.
Councilor Campbell?
Oops, sorry. Thank you. Just, I just want to make sure we, I asked all the questions of people that brought concerns forward. And first to the presenter, you've said it, but it was asked again. You're for sure going to live in one side and rent out the other. That's, that's, that is your goal.
Yes.
There's no, no doubt about that.
Correct.
Yeah, good. The other thing, and I probably do, someone from management, is the, how will taxes be affected by people living in the area? That was, that was brought up. Can someone, is that going to go up, go down, or what's, what will happen with, with their own property taxes with, with the new duplex? Fourplex, duplex, fourplex?
Matthews, through Deputy Mayor Parker to Councilor Campbell. So taxes and self-assessment values, they are done by mass appraisal in the area in, in general, so that as that area is assessed, they will be assessed based on, based on mass appraisal of the area. So there's no question about it. Part of that is developments and so forth that go into that. And of course, other sales that happen throughout that area.
Okay. I think I've asked, from what I can gather, I think those are all of the concerns that were brought up. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I do have one more question, just regarding how it was presented. I appreciate the presentation. I present, like seeing the picture in front gives a better sense of scale. But we didn't get an aerial view of how the lay of the land is. There was no kind of like a site plan. Is there a reason why?
No, I just, the, the main focus that I was told to bring today was the front elevation. I actually have full working blueprints that I could build off of tomorrow. So I have site plans, all, all sides of the elevation. I have every floor. It's fully working blueprints. And those were brought to the open house. I want to make that very clear, that you could build the house off the blueprints I brought to the open house. There's no question about what was, what I was proposing to build there.
But Development Services has seen it and all that. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct. And we have chosen to include the front elevations because that impacts the concerns that we heard. that we heard or the priorities that we heard at the tea party that the, or the open house, that the appearance of the building was of high importance to the neighbors. So we've added that. The setbacks of, that are required as part of the direct control bylaw take care of the placement of the garage and the house.
Councilor Milton Hope.
Thank you. This question, I think, would be to administration. So can I characterize this? Because there were questions from the public and I know Councilor Campbell went into this direction, but I want some clarification. Is it fair to characterize the, this build as improving property value, but not necessarily taxes of properties in the neighborhood?
To deputy, through Deputy Mayor Parker to Councilor Milton Hope. So there is a difference between the actual tax values and assessment component. And, and so the assessment component, and I'm, you know, Mr. Laverty would probably be able to explain it a lot better than I can, but as I mentioned, is basically on mass appraisal components. Once that's set, and so just going back to mass appraisal, that means it's not necessarily on one property. So the overall assessment in an area goes in for all the sales and, and improvements in, in that, in that area. And that's kind of based on that and the conditions of the, of the property or properties is how the assessment value is created. When it comes to taxation, once the assessment values are there, it's based on the residential mill rate or the amount that we need to collect. And that percentage is what goes against each one of those properties in dollars. So there's not necessarily a direct tie in individual properties per se, like for one individual property.
Okay. So I, I'm not sure that that's clear enough for everyone, but thank you for the explanation. Could you try again? Does it improve property value, but not necessarily increase taxes on the adjoining properties? That's what we heard from some of the, the constituents who were concerned that because this new build is going in there, my property taxes are going to go up. Is that the case?
Without knowing the, the area and the, and the mass appraisal process in that, what I can say is that it should be a smaller percentage because it's only one property in a larger area and mass appraisal. I'd have to go to Mr. Laverty to get a more definitive piece on that, but I would say then it shouldn't be, it's not, I guess it's not based on one property going in, it's a whole area of properties. And so that would be the, the larger component.
So blame your property increases on council, not on the builder? I think that's what we're hearing.
My apologies, Councilor Milton Hope, I missed that last question.
That wasn't a question, it was a statement.
Okay, perfect.
I made, I made a statement to the public. Blame your tax increases on us, not on the builder. Okay, thank you.
Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel. Thank you very much. Thank you very much to our presenters and thank you very much from everybody from the community who, who did come in to speak to this. Primarily, we've got some concerns around parking and who polices that. So I guess through you, Mr. Chair, to the city manager designate, when people find that they're having parking with this particular, with this particular development or any development in their neighborhood, who do they call to police that parking?
So that's a good question. For the most part, residents, they, they work between themselves to solve these issues. But there are opportunities, like this can not be achieved, and then they can call 311 and there will be somebody from our area, I'm not sure if it's on the regulatory side or even on the parking side, to assess the situation and then try to review what the rules and the regulations in the land use by law are and make everybody aware of what they are supposed to, to do. On top of that, I will need to, again, go back and talk to regulatory services and transportation to get additional details that I might not have at this time.
Okay. And then the follow-up questions to that. And Mr. Sanchez, this will come to you. Certainly, we do have issues with bins coming in. They do need to be returned back to property within a certain amount of time. We have a bylaw for that. Who polices that?
And another excellent question. That's in the bylaw today, but currently we don't, we don't fully or actively enforce that. We, for the most part, as residents, and that's part of the, of the education campaign that we have, and even during the spring and summer month with the students that go house, house to house to do the upstaging, we only are involved when we receive a complaint. And when that complaint is received, then we have staff within the Waste and Recycling Utility that goes and talks to residents about that, the issue of not returning bins into, into, back to their property. Back in the day, that was one of the reasons too of relocating to the front, because people for the most part will bring that car inside their property. But it's only enforced on a complaint basis.
So, and to complain about, to complain about that, our residents would call 311?
That's correct. They will call 311 and that will be directed to the right area in the department.
Very much.
Councilor Dodek.
Mrs. Sanchez, I was a little bit confused about the answer you gave with respect to parking and its enforcement. My understanding is if it's not a, an area that has barriers or requiring permits, that anyone can park anywhere at any time on a public street, as long as it's not more than three consecutive days. So you could park there for three days, drive around the block, park it there for three days, and so on. Isn't, isn't that what the state of the law is in Lethbridge?
Yes. You are correct. And just going to explain that into, it's also, I just checked with the staff here. For those concerns where the vehicle is being there for more than 72 hours, like you mentioned, then we could call the police, the non-emergency line at the police. And at that time, a commissioner will be sent to, to deal with that issue. But that's, technically speaking, everybody can park anywhere within the city, as long as they follow the steps that you've mentioned before.
So, so if you've got 20 people living in this fourplex, they could park in front of the street there and as long as they move it every third day, they're fine?
That's correct. That could be applicable for, for, for that case as a worst case scenario.
Yeah, I can just add one thing to that as well. If there was a complaint received against any specific development, this one or any other one, when staff go out to assess the situation, they would also be checking to make sure that the particular development is in compliance with the approval they have. So if it was against this one, and there's supposed to be three parking spaces on each, on each unit, staff would be ensuring that those three parking spaces have been provided.
I was asking specifically about public spaces in front of it, that you can park there, and anyone can park there anytime, as long as it's not more than three days. But that three days can be extended if they just move it.
Yep. That's all there is. That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of council? I now declare this public hearing closed. Well, it just gets people's attention, that's why. It's here, too. It's right here. I'll call this meeting of city council back to order. We're going to deal with bylaw 6399 of the land use amendment, land use bylaw amendment. The following bylaw signed by Councilor Carlson for second reading. Be resolved that bylaw 6399 land use bylaw amendment regarding 102012A Street be given second reading. Councilor Carlson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just, we traditionally used to do with these things at a public hearing and then postpone them for two weeks. Our new process is to bring them forward at the meeting when they are at the public hearing. But it's always sort of traditional to ask if any of my colleagues need any additional time on this soak time, because we've heard quite a lot of information today. If not, we can proceed.
So I'm going to take it as business as usual until, until I have a motion to postpone.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate this coming forward today. I appreciate the community coming out and expressing their concerns. I do hope many of their concerns were allayed in the fact that from what my understanding of this is that this will actually give greater certainty and greater number of parking spots for this parcel, should this go forward. If, if, if we stick with the current zoning, which is RL, a very similar number of basement or bedrooms could be provided on-site. We, I've heard that the, the actual property is condemned and will probably be replaced regardless, whether it's a duplex, a fourplex, or single family. This will give certainty to the neighborhood of what will be going in. It'll also provide extra off-street parking. Further to that, I believe what is being proposed will provide an improvement to the neighborhood. So at this time, I am willing to support this. I would love to hear my colleagues' thoughts.
Thank you for opening. Councilor Dodek.
No, I will not be supporting this. There's a number of reasons for that. The applicant said that he was doing this application by the book. In reality, doing the application by the book is by doing the existing zoning, which is RL district, which would allow a maximum of two dwelling units. Going from two units to four units, we've already heard, it's going to be the difference between 12 bins versus six bins. And although the parking is going to be slightly higher for four families, which will be on the property being six, the requirement for the two is four. Of course, there's no control how many people are going to be in each family. And then assurance by the applicant that he's going to be living in the residence is an assurance that I, I believe him. But that doesn't mean that six months on the road, a year down the road, it's not going to go to somewhere else because there is no prohibition on selling the property. And then all of a sudden, you've got completely four different families. I don't like the fact that we keep getting these sorts of applications in single-family zoned districts and forcing people to come out, in this case, seven people that physically came here and echoed some concerns. It is zoned for a duplex. It's a permitted use. It's, gives notice to people that it's a permitted use. Those seven folks, if they came here and someone was applying for a duplex, would have no cause to be here because it would be allowed. It's permitted. It's required to be provided by the development officer. But instead, we're dealing with these direct controls and we're dealing with folks who are living in the neighborhood. And I'm not prepared to do the accommodation because I think people should be allowed to rely on the zoning that they're living in at that, at the time that they purchased their residences. So I, I simply can't support it. I do, it, it does look like a, a nice building. And obviously, if it was in an area that was zoned for a fourplex, it wouldn't be before us because it'd be a permitted use. But regretfully, under these circumstances, I cannot support it.
Councilor Palladino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too am struggling with the, the amount of direct control options that, that are brought to us as council, but I won't go down that path. I think, you know, my frustration with it. I also, it's no secret that I'm pro-development. I like development for the city. It's good for the city. But I also know that sometimes you can over-develop a parcel. And even though this is designed to appear as a duplex, it is indeed a fourplex on a 50-foot lot. I have concerns about the height and the scale of this project, and I sympathize with the neighbors. I know when one parking stall isn't going to be enough for the lower unit, they'll just put, pour another concrete slab on the front yard and you'll have three or four cars parked out front, as well as the ones in the back. I, I would prefer that this not appear, only appear as a duplex, but to actually be a duplex. So I would support a lesser zoning of, say, R50. Thank you.
Councilor Milton Hope.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I appreciate the robust dialogue and comments from my colleagues. Although I believe the developer is a truly genuine and honest person in regards to his intended use for this property, I too am very concerned about the potential uses for this property by, in effect, substantially increasing the number of vehicles that could potentially be on the property, the number of people that could be living in the property. And although we can say that we, we put safeguards in place to manage that, it becomes a nightmare to manage it after the fact. I do believe very strongly, as, as my colleague has indicated, in growth and development, gentrification of neighborhoods. But I can't support this at this time based on the intended change in this bylaw.
Councilor Carlson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I will surprisingly be supporting this. While I usually don't support the knockdown of any older home, I understand why this one is being knocked down. And I believe that we have to look at the densification of communities. It is not always easy. I actually have a, a single-family residence beside me that has five cars on the street. So it doesn't, parking isn't just an issue with duplexes, it's an issue overall. And duplexes don't necessarily make the parking problems because quite often in the duplex, you'll have people who don't have vehicles because they are looking for something that is more financially suitable, because they can't afford a car, want to be in a place where they can walk. And so densification is actually an important aspect of reducing the cost of utilities over time because we're better using utilities, having more people in one neighborhood. I believe densification should be something that is shared around the communities. And until we have an area redevelopment plan here, we have nothing to guide us in that, in that matter. But going on my gut, I will support this motion.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel.
Thank you very much. This one, this one is a tough one. Having sat on a number of SDAB hearings and, and taking all of that into account, when we make those decisions, we make those decisions based on strictly the development, what it's going to bring to the community. And that we look at things like making sure it's, it's got enough parking, that it fits in the neighborhood, and that you've gotten the, the good feedback from, from the open house. This is only coming to council because of the legal suites in the basement. And that being the case, this could have been a duplex. So we do have some concerns wrapped around, wrapped around that and how many people we may end up living there, how much parking we may have, the uncertainties about the number of bins. I want to support this for the reasons that both Councilors Carlson and Carlson outline. But as Councilor Dodek rightly outlines, we do need to allow people some comfort in the zoning that is currently in place in, in their neighborhoods. And we've seen a degradation of that over the years. I do think that it is incumbent upon us to really start taking a look at those area development plans and getting those in place because those will really help us guide and those will really help us build our city and help us understand what residents that are currently living in those developments and in those areas wants. So at this point, I will not be supporting this one. But for me, this was a real struggle to get to that point. So thank you very much for everybody for coming to this one today.
Councilor Campbell.
Thank you. Mostly, I'm just going with my gut feeling that I really believe in the integrity of the developer. He was there for all of the right reasons. He wanted to do it right. He's going to improve the site from a place that was, where it was, it was in disrepair. He's going to build it up, make it a beautiful site. He's going to live there. So he's going to be living the problems, should those problems come up. And he could be a part of the solution to it as well. So I, I will support this motion. So I, I will support this motion.
Thank you very much. And it's interesting, this debate and discussion, so I don't think anyone's integrity is being questioned. I think, I think the developer's done an excellent job. He has a great proposal and he's looking for his best interest. And that's what he, he or she, whoever the developers are at any time, it's their ROI. But I can't base my decision on people's ROI. I always believe I have to base the decision on the impact it's going to have in the neighborhood. And the problem is if, if something like this is approved and we all think it's going to look great and all that, if it's not a success, there's no way of going backwards. The genie's out of the bottle and there's no way to repair it. And so I was hoping, and that's why I'm going to ask the question, is what's the trigger point to going to afford? Well, there's no trigger points. There's no matter of step one, everything's looking really good, it's been built, now we can go to step, second stage in regarding to allowing. Today is allowing all four. And I don't know the consequences in that. And I always believe that the people in the surrounding neighborhood kind of carry usually a bigger stick because they're the ones who've invested, those are the ones who have followed the guidelines in place. And so they deserve some certainty and security in knowing what's going to happen in their neighborhood. I think the compromise would be a duplex. As stated earlier, you wouldn't even need to be here, it's a permitted use. It would have some densification. And I think any kind of development in that area will be a lot better than what's there right now. And I think everyone knows that. First, foremost, everyone's said that. But I think a compromise would be a duplex. But as it's written right now, I think adding that extra density, there's some uncertainty. I think our administration has done an amazing job in presenting it, but at this time, I just don't want to take that risk at this time. So I will not be supporting it.
Closing.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I appreciate all the debate and comments because, you know, it is always difficult when you're making these, these decisions that will impact either somebody wanting to move in, somebody wanting to develop a property, and the surrounding neighbors. When I look at this, I, I really do see this as giving greater certainty to the neighborhood. Right now, a duplex could go in that could have five bedrooms up, two down. It could be a giant, single-family house or a duplex. I have a, as councillor Carlson said, I've got a house right around the corner from me, single-family residential, no garage, six cars parked in the street because it's, it's a university, or sorry, college rental. So you can't control those things. But under this development, if it went forward, we would have certainty that there's two parking spots for each unit in the back and in the front. I think it gives greater off-street parking. So I do understand the neighborhood concerns, but I think if we went with the proposed development, in front of this, it gives actually greater certainty and greater control over the parking in the neighborhood. If it doesn't go forward, it could just be whatever happens, happens. So I would like council support, but I think we're not going to get it. So I'll just call for the vote.
And the vote's been called. Now I'm going to ask for a roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Carlson.
In favor.
Councillor Dodick.
Opposed.
Councillor Middleton Hope.
Opposed.
Councillor Palladino.
Opposed.
Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel.
Opposed.
Deputy Mayor Parker.
Opposed.
Councillor Campbell.
Favor.
Councillor Carlson.
In favor.
Five, that is defeated.
Second reading has been defeated, five-three. Now I'll go to third reading. Be resolved that by, oh, we don't need to do, okay, I apologize. That's correct, thank you, so. Perfect. So thank you very much. Appreciate that. We'll move on in our agenda here. I do have Melissa Craig online to answer councillor Carlson's earlier question in regards to consent agenda, I think it was procurement. So Ms. Craig, it was regarding just culture item. Thank you, Ms. Craig, for being part of the, being able to answer the question.
Thank you, Council, for asking the question. And I apologize, I had my camera in the wrong spot there for you guys. I'm not, would it be possible, councillor Carlson, to just re-ask me the question that you would?
Yes, that's no problem at all. So it's a Just Culture Champions course, and I was just looking for more information as, do you know the timeline of how long it should take, the expected outcome, what can staff expect from it? Just some more information on how that's going to benefit our staff.
Okay. Thank you for the question. It's a great question. The course itself has already been completed, so the individuals that were taking the training, that completed on March the 15th. It was a group of stakeholders and individuals from across the People and Culture Department itself, so a cross-functional group, as well as some individuals from within our Lethbridge Fire and Emergency Services Group and our Lethbridge Police Service. The reason that those two groups, specifically departments, were included is that they are the departments that brought the Just Culture concept and this specific model to the city of Lethbridge in 2015. How it will benefit our overall working population, I guess, like our employees, is it will provide an opportunity for people in culture to bring the Just Culture, the visuals, like the, the actual tools and those pieces, across and into the rest of the organization. The, the model and the concept of Just Culture is already in alignment with how we would be looking at and assessing behavioral choices of staff inside of situations, as well as its supports from a safety, health, and wellness lens and a people and culture lens, are really making sure that as we look at situations, we are also looking at what are the systemic influences that influence the behavioral choices people make inside of a particular event.
Well, thank you. That sounds like quite an amazing program to be moving ahead.
And we are very excited about it, yes.
Well, thank you very much for taking the time to come and answer the question.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Ms. Craig, appreciate that. Moving right along, we have a, a motion that was pulled out, or a resolution pulled out of the consent agenda. This is the taxi rates and regulation review update. Now it's 8.1.2, formula is 4.4.4. Be resolved that city council amend the license by law number 5658 as follows. One, that the regulated fares and charges for operation of taxi operators, as well as any device associated with the fares and charges, be removed. And two, that the requirements for a taxi to be equipped with a top light be removed and further direct administration to prepare the amending by law to capture the said changes by Q3 2023. Acting Schmidt-Rempel. I got a little tongue-twister there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We certainly, we discussed this robustly at the last SPC, allowing and discussing that the market should be permitted to dictate how taxis were run. And that was why we came up with the discussion and with the decision that we, we did. Seeing that there is some further discussion to be had at the council level, I decided, yes, we should be pulling this out of the consent agenda to allow ourselves that opportunity to have that discussion and address any concerns that council may have with regards to the decision that the SPC was recommending.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Do you have a question or debate? I don't know, question or councillor Carlson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a, a question through you two, city manager or designate. As we did hear, at least in the part of the presentation I saw at Community Safety Committee, was it a community in Alberta had gone down this path and then went back? What, does anyone know what the challenges are if we follow suit of moving forward and then find the need to walk back? What, how, is that, is that difficult?
Just to answer the question, I, I do believe that our administration, correct me if I'm wrong, members of the committee, or anyone who was there as well, they didn't see an issue, there was no, they didn't have a concern, there was no red flags that were brought up to them as well. And correct me if I'm wrong on that. Yeah, so there was no red flags, no concerns that were brought forward through Mr. Henley as well as Mr. Enns. So that's all I can tell you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Just in support of your comment, there were, there were no concerns that were additionally voiced, so let's move forward.
And if I'm not mistaken, he was, he represents, or he owns 52% of the cabs in Lethbridge. So he was, yeah.
Any other questions? Can I take that as your opening?
Yep, my opening and my closing.
Okay, councillor Carlson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, I will support this at this time. I was, I had some concerns. I appreciate Acting Schmear.
Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel. You make one little mistake and everyone just takes you. I feel like I'm at home with my kids.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pulling it so we could have them ask, but I trust the work of the committee, so I will be supporting this.
Thank you very much. I will be supporting this as well. And I, I believe that we wanted, I remember trying to do this years ago, and I'm glad our administration came with something that we could find good commerce. And I think that's the power of the SPC. The SPC gave us an opportunity to speak to industry, speak to our administration, ask the questions. And I, I believe that there was a time and place for cities and municipalities to be in the, the business of helping regulate the industry and all that. But I always felt, felt over time, as industries changed with Uber and, and different business models, that it's kind of archaic in the way we were doing things. We're telling, we're telling businesses, this is the price you have to set, this is the minimum, this is the maximum. We don't do that with any other industries. We don't go to Safeway and say, what's, this is the cheapest you can charge for bread, and this is the most expensive to charge for bread. And so I felt that it was time for us to evolve and change. I think the committee felt like that. And secondly, the, the top was on the, the reason why we wanted to eliminate the whole markings of top is, what we heard from industry is, it's quite costly. Second of all, there's quite a much damage that occurs to the vehicles and there's other ways of marking a vehicle, so, and that's up to the, that's up to the private sector to decide how they market themselves. So that was one of the reasons why we took off the requirement as well. That's my debate, and so I will be supporting this.
See, oh, councillor Carlson.
I will actually be voting against this. I remember from the first time they were at SPC that there were several different taxi companies and they were supporting having us oversee the fees and services. And when you look at deregulation, you bring up, you know, we don't chart, set what should be set in shopping malls or shopping stores, and maybe we should so we wouldn't be gouged and have the inflation that we have from grocery companies right now. So I will be voting against this deregulation.
Councillor Milton Hope.
Thank you. I'll, I'll be voting in favor of this. I just want to create a distinction in the language. What we're trying to do is we're trying to get out of the business of controlling a business. We still have a responsibility to regulate that business, and I don't think that has substantially changed. So I will be in favor of it.
Do you close?
As in the SPC, I will be supporting this. We did hear from the taxi cab companies that what we were moving towards was much more like a rideshare program where they could set their own rates and they would be competitive amongst themselves. Much like ride sharing, that's what we're going to see. So I will be supporting this. They do have the apps available to them for their price setting and we are still making sure all the safety policies and every like, and everything like that are still in place. So it's not like we're completely ignoring the business or not checking on what the regulations are. We are letting them run their own business like it is their own business. So I will still be supporting this and I would ask for council support. With that, I will call the vote.
Question's been called. Maybe I'll do a roll call because I think we do have some opposition, so Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Dodick.
Favor.
Councillor Middleton Hope.
In favor.
Councillor Palladino.
In favor.
Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel.
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Parker.
Favor.
Councillor Campbell.
Favor.
Councillor Carlson.
Favor.
And councillor Carlson.
Opposed.
Seven to one, that carries.
And Mr. Zemajd, please, once again, thank your administration for all the work they've been doing on those SBCs, it's greatly appreciated. Moving right along, council updates. Council updates? You said you had something. Oh, councillor Carlson, my apologies. Councillor Carlson, council updates?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is the, on behalf of the Lethbridge Police Service and Lethbridge Police Commission, so it's an update. There is a community conversation happening tonight held by the Lethbridge Police Service at Fleetwood Boden School, starting at 6:00 PM running till 8:00 PM. If anybody wishes to attend, they'll be addressing concerns around the downtown area. There'll be a series of community conversations throughout the year, but this is the first one, and I hope that people, if they have a chance at 6 o'clock, will attend. There will be light refreshments because we understand at 6 o'clock you may need some food to be able to entice you to come. So I hope people will come and the members of the police commission, as many as possible, will be there to listen and to, if anybody has any concerns, they can talk to members of the police commission who are there, but this is the police services community conversation tonight.
Thank you, councillor Carlson. Any other updates from members of city council? Seeing none, I'll move to following resolutions from closed meeting. Signed by councillor Milton Hope, 2023-2026 Operating Budget Debrief. Be resolved that city council direct that the closed meeting reports, documents, and discussions with respect to 2023 to 2026 operating budget debrief remain confidential pursuant to section 24 Advice from Officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Councillor Milton Hope?
Call a question.
Question's been called. All those in favor? Opposed. Carries unanimous. Under the following resolution from, from closed meeting, councillor Palladino, Land Banking Update 14.2. Be resolved that city council direct administration to execute the confidential direction provided in closed session and further be resolved that city council direct that disclosed meeting reports, documents, and discussions with respect to the land banking update remain confidential pursuant to sections 23 Local Public Bodies Confidences and 24 Advice from Officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Councillor Palladino?
Thank you, I will call the question.
Question's been called. All those in favor? Anything else? We are adjourned. Thank you.
As you're wont, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Sorry.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Jen.